Good morning. We'll call to order this city council work session of February 23rd, 2020. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Powers?
Here.
Luttrell?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Fire Robin?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mr. Sorb, do you introduce our staff or other guests that may be present or electronically?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to. On the staff side, and we don't have guests aside from staff today, but we have Ms. Tara Music, our city recorder, Danielle Smith, city attorney, director of development services, Tim Beavers. We also have director of community relations, John Luttrell, transportation engineer, David Metzger, director of economic development, Tom Anderson, planning services manager, Sherif Young, deputy police chief major, Matt Austin, director of parks and recreation, Terry Napier, and fire chief, Mike Carrier, on the call today.
Okay, this time we'll ask our city attorney, Ms. Danielle Smith, to discuss conducting electronic meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we know, the governor has suspended the provisions of the Open Meetings Act to allow governing bodies to meet electronically rather than having to meet in person during the COVID-19 pandemic. In order to proceed with meeting electronically, the governing body should make a decision or should make a determination that meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 outbreak. If you are attending without video, you are asked to identify yourself by name when you're speaking in order to comply with the terms of the governor's order. At this time, if members of city council need to discuss the necessity for meeting electronically, they should do so. If not, members of city council should go ahead and vote by roll call on whether it is necessary to meet electronically in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans.
Okay, do you hear a motion?
I'll make that motion that we continue electronically and have a question. Do we have any direction from the governor yet as to how much longer we'll be able to meet electronically? Or will this be an ongoing?
Yes, Councilwoman Powers, we do have, we did receive an email probably around 6 o'clock last evening from Tennessee Municipal League, and you all may have received the same email, but it did indicate that the governor's intent to extend the ability for local governments to meet electronically through the month of March, and that that executive order has not been executed, will be executed later this week. But that is the intent of Governor Lee at this time. So what I would ask, and we can do this under my comments later or council's comments, but I'd like for you all to determine going forward, certainly we need to make a decision on next Tuesday evening's meeting, whether that's virtual or whether it will be held at the Slater Center, and then also our work session in March as to whether that will be virtual, a hybrid, or in-person.
My motion stands, Mayor. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, Tara, please call the roll.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go into the rest of the agenda this time. Item number five, Mr. Sorb, if you'd like to. Take that one on?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to. As council's aware, during the February work session of each year, staff presents the five-year capital improvement plan. And this plan is prepared as we identify major equipment replacements or major facility or infrastructure improvements. This largely serves as a financial planning document and is a key element of our budget process for the next fiscal year. This year's CIP, or Capital Improvement Plan, totals just under $44 million. Over half of that is, will be funds received from other sources, either other local sources such as Sullivan County or Tennessee Department of Transportation, other state sources, as well as federal sources. Also, a substantial amount of this funding will be debt financed. And we'll talk a little bit more about an issue later, either later this fiscal year or early next fiscal year, to address some projects and also refinancing some existing debt. The school system typically provides a section in this. They've just recently, or in the past several months, received stimulus funding in the amount of slightly over $3.7 million, and they're working through their process as to how those funds are going to be allocated, how those funds are going to be spent. So we will be updating our five-year CIP to include the school portion of that financial planning document. I'd like to also just compliment staff, Tim Beavers, and Tara Music, as well as all of the department heads as they've provided input into the drafting of this document. I do emphasize that it's a living document and will be evaluated, as I indicated earlier, annually reviewed to determine its continued appropriateness, given changes to meet our community needs. Also, even the proposed expenditures for this fiscal year may well change as we evaluate our revenues and more closely refine those in the budget development process over the next six to seven weeks. So with that, Tim, would you like to make the presentation?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Sorb. Good morning, council members, mayor, vice mayor. As always, during February, we present the capital improvement plan for the five years. This would be from FY 2022 to FY 2026. All right, with our first slide, and this is like page number one in your book, and it's just an expenditure summary. And over the five-year, the total for all categories is approximately $43 million, $43.7 million. Once again, as Mr. Sorb stated, the school system, these numbers in here reflect last year's numbers. Just roll forward a fiscal year for the school system until they can come to agreement on what they'll spend that additional $3.7 million on for capital, how it will impact their capital funds, and once they get that, we'll revise the document accordingly. Equipment's about $8.1 million. General facilities, a little over $6 million. Transportation, $8.9 million, and utilities, $12.7 million. Utilities, and we'll talk about it in a little bit, being mostly improvements, the largest number improvements to the wastewater treatment facilities, some continued improvements down there. Looking at the funding summary, these spread out over 24 different funds. You can just run down through there and see, you know, we usually concentrate on the general fund and over the five years right now, about $4.2 million. Next year, about $888,000 in general fund money toward facilities and equipment. That, as Mr. Sorb mentioned, we do have some additional funding that we're looking at to offset about $620,000 of that. As we go through the budget, these numbers will be refined based on that money. Like I said, you can just look down. Overall, next fiscal year, $21.85 million proposed at this time. The first section we'll look at is the equipment section, and approximately 8 point, well, you can see the number, $8,119,000. And just some of the things to look at in that over the next five years, run down the list. You've got the standard equipment that we try to replace to keep our fleet and our equipment in shape where that we're not spending more on repairs than we would if we owned a piece of equipment, trying to be as efficient as possible with the money. Bigger numbers you'll see, and we'll talk about it in a second, for next fiscal years, fire department at 2.2.
Is everyone lost, not you?
Can everybody hear me still?
Yeah, I think the audio is still good, at least on my end.
Okay.
Okay.
$2.2 million for the fire. We'll talk about that, and that's replacement of some older equipment, looking at potentially in facilities, looking at a new fire station in anticipation of that. So with that, just some highlights of equipment. IT equipment, about $50,000. That's replacement of a police video server and some additional security software, very important software to try to keep up with the pace of people trying to break into computer systems and do nefarious things. And that is ongoing, and our IT department does a great job of taking care of us, and we're very appreciative of them. Development service, community development equipment, that's replacement of one of the codes vehicles. Fleet maintenance equipment, that's replacement $30,000 of a 1977 forklift. So it certainly has had a good life, and it's time to move on to another piece of equipment there and let it have a good retirement. So solid waste equipment, this would be an autoloader, the most expensive piece of equipment that we have to purchase. The last autoloader we have, I believe we purchased in FY 2016, and that would be desperately needed, another autoloader to replace some aging equipment. It's very expensive repairs right now on that equipment. Transit system vehicles, and this is some money received from the CARES Act from the feds, $365,000. That would be two new buses and an additional mini bus, minivan for senior activities. Water and sewer equipment, just standard equipment replacement of trucks and other equipment. Fire department, the $2.2 million, and this would be through several different funds that that would come out of, but we do anticipate getting money from Sullivan County, and Bill, you can correct me, I think it's 384th or?
358.
358, thank you. $358,000 next fiscal year. But this equipment would replace a 1992 pumper truck, a 1994 pumper truck, and a 1994, the aerial 100-foot ladder truck. So you've got some really old equipment in need of getting some newer stuff. And most of the funding would be from a proposed seller bonds. One pumper would come from that Sullivan County fund with some additional general fund money offsetting the equipment cost. A pumper is about $550,000 for one pumper, and aerial trucks about $1.1 million in that neighborhood. So, but this is contingent on, once again, selling bond funds to get this equipment, and we'll talk a little bit here in facilities about the future fire station number two. Parks and rec equipment, that's replacement of existing equipment, just routine replacement of trucks and mowers and other equipment. Police ATVs, these are used mainly in special events, and that's replacing some really old ATVs that have reached the end of their design life. And the two, next two sort of go hand in hand, the in-car video systems for police department and the police vehicles, and that's replacement of seven vehicles per year to keep on schedule with the number of shift people they have, the number of vehicles they need to maintain an adequate fleet to serve the public. Any questions on equipment?
I have a question. We had talked about, you know, with the parking situation being what it is downtown, and we know that there is going to be more and more traffic downtown, and back and forth to the Pinnacle and this, that, and the other. I know Chad had brought up about a parking shuttle at some point in time, and I know his was very futuristic in its thinking, but nevertheless, have we given any thought to, I know we have the buses, public transit, but have we given any thought with everything that's going on, a shuttle of some kind that can make rounds to our parking lots to bring downtown, or a shuttle that would take specifically from the Pinnacle to downtown and downtown back to the Pinnacle? The reason that I ask is accessibility, you know, is so important, not only to downtown, but to the Pinnacle as we have more and more tourists, and that would just increase our sales tax, could potentially increase our sales tax revenues. Has there been any thought on the part of staff as to how, with what we perceive to be an opportunity in front of us with new people coming into the area, how we could form and develop a shuttle system?
Let me speak briefly to that. You may recall from our presentation or from Sheriff's presentation last month, we talked about one of the ways to take advantage of the future casino development was a shuttle, just like you're describing. And I think that shuttle would probably service downtown, the casino, and the Pinnacle. What we would hope is that that would be a joint project with our sister city, as well as the casino and potentially the Pinnacle at that point. We may also be able to, if this was an electric-type vehicle, get perhaps some TVA money. With that, we may be able to get BTS to participate in that. Beyond that conversation, we haven't pursued it any further than that. But there are FTA dollars that could be brought to the table with that for both sides of town. But I do think that's something that we've got to contemplate moving forward.
Okay, so you think that this will be something that will be in discussion, like the next six months? Or what is the expectation?
I think if all of those pieces came together, I think it's not, wouldn't be this fiscal year coming up, but the fiscal year following that.
Sounds like it needs to be in our goals document.
For a study, to study.
Yeah, 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 for the first steps, yeah.
Okay. All right. I've written it down.
Okay, all right. Good, good. I think it's also important to point out, and Tim touched on this. The governor's local government assistance grant totals a little over $620,000 for Bristol, Tennessee, and that essentially is almost an identical amount as we received during our current fiscal year. And we've funded public safety equipment and repairs to municipal facilities using those dollars this year. It would be our intent to use those dollars in similar fashion next year. We do, and as we've discussed internally, how do we document that? Because the governor's, while that was all part of his State of the State address, the governor's budget has not been approved yet. So we will model that in our budget as a fund balance drawdown, then with the anticipation, and certainly the hope, that the governor's proposal goes through the general assembly intact, and those will be the dollars that will offset any drawdown of our fund balance. And we may have to rethink a lot of things if it appears that that local government support grant is starting to slide sideways, but that's how we're modeling at this point.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions on equipment? Okay, moving on, next would be our general facilities section, and it's a little over $6 million in general facilities. You can look down the project for next, projects for next year, about $1.45 million, 1.445. Biggest things, look at starting the fire station number two, proposing to start that. Process with engineering and construction maybe getting underway next fiscal year. That obviously would be a bond issue, and that would tie into the equipment purchases also. Just run down through some of those highlights there. City Hall Annex, the 85,000 is to replace the roof over on the Annex building. It's original roof, so it's needing replacing. Downtown redevelopment, and this is really FY '23 through '25, and some things were put on hold due to budget constraints that we were concerned with and COVID-related issues. But that would be to look at doing the crosswalks downtown in conjunction with our sister city, and also extending some decorative lighting, but those are some further out years. Once again, not knowing how our funding will come out with the way the COVID and the economy right now. Fire station renovations, 2025, that's upgrades to fire station three, such as gender-specific bathrooms, bunk areas, some concrete repair in the bays, paving, things like that. New fire station two, $2.475 million, and what we proposed is for next fiscal year to start and complete the design and hopefully put a bid out on the street and start construction of the fire station. And Bill, do you want to touch on that?
Yeah, I think from a timing standpoint, assuming city council is committed to the project, and we want to proceed in the timeline that we're suggesting, then we would, let me go back, we would issue bonds late this fiscal year or early next fiscal year. And if you recall, we have a $2.5 million obligation to the new middle school, and we said we would, especially with the price of money right now, cash is somewhat keen. We wanted to preserve as much of that in our fund balance as we possibly could. So we would borrow the 2.5, take advantage of lower interest rates for the middle school. Also do a similar amount for the fire station. Now, if the timing is such, what I'd like to do, quite frankly, is to have by July of this year, have a design contract in front of you for formal consideration to move forward with the design of the fire station, and then bidding throughout the design and bid, the remainder of this year, with the hopes of being under construction in very early 2022, and then completing that construction very late 2022 or early 2023, calendar year 2023, and be in that station. The same thing, same timing basically with equipment. You know, you've got generally a year billed out, so we would want to, assuming that the governor's grant moves forward in a timely fashion, we would want to award the bids on the pumper that is sensitive to the matching funds from the governor's local support grant and in July so that we could accept delivery prior to June 30th of 2022 and take advantage of the governor's stimulus grants and funding that.
And also the bonds, as Bill had mentioned earlier, would cover, and we talked about the additional ladder truck and the additional pumper at the same time. That would be included in that bond, potential bond sale?
We will also, you'll have, I plan to have Scott Gibson, our financial advisor, with us at either a March or April work session to discuss not only the issuance of the new bonds, but also refunding of two earlier bonds that, one was the second tranche of funding for Pinnacle, and then the other was the funding that we've used for a few other projects along the way between that point, and I think we issued those in perhaps mid-2015. But the refunding of those two bonds would net us a savings of about $135,000 estimated per year. So that can be used to service new debt. Won't service all of it, but it can be used to service a portion of the new debt.
With $135,000 for the bond repayment, it covers how much in real dollars?
With today's interest rates, we're looking, and if you remember, we looked at $60,000 last year for every million of debt on an annual principal and interest. That number now, and again, these are just good budget estimate numbers, $50,000 per million borrowed on a 30-year note for annual principal and interest payments. The fire apparatus, though, we would not carry 30 years. With the life generally, generally, we're at the life of our existing units now. So with those being 25 years of life, we would amortize the cost of those out over a 20-year period, but then the fire station as well as the contribution of the middle school over 30 years. So you can figure $50,000 per million on a 30-year amortization schedule and $60,000 per million on a 20-year amortization schedule. As a good budget number. As a budget number.
So the hundred and sixty-five that you mentioned, has, is it being consumed or dedicated to any of these specific highlights that we're looking at?
Yeah, it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and it would be dedicated, dedicated to, to, to our debt service fund.
Thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Chad.
I'd, I'd go ahead and finish out the general facility, and I'll ask a question when you get finished.
Uh, recreation improvements, uh, fifty-four thousand, that's Food City Park. That's finishing up the Bark Park with some furnishings there and uh, topping that nice new facility off. Still Creek Park, the two hundred and forty thousand from twenty-two to twenty-four is the uh, stormwater improvements and resurfacing of the asphalt areas in the park over a three-year period. Uh, trails and greenways, and this, you know, we've got to have discussions on trails and greenways. But this is a hundred and fifty thousand for engineering and potential property acquisition. And Bill, you might want to speak on that.
Yeah, I, I guess the, the trail design itself with our in-house engineering staff. And, and by that, I'm talking about the routing and, and, and so forth of the trail itself. There are some structural elements where, where we have creek crossings that we will need to, to, to um, to secure a consultant to do, to do the bridge design on that. And that's an element of the hundred and fifty thousand that we have in this, as well as right-of-way acquisition. But I think, you know, as we move into this first phase, uh, and, and we'll have uh, and, and especially when we can begin to come together, I, I would like our engineering staff to, to lay out the route of this. You know, we, we call, we call um, the first project uh, of, of, of the trail between Roosterfront uh, Park South to Bristol Motor Speedway, with the first phase of that project being from the, from the racetrack north to an area in the vicinity of the voco Christian School. But I think city council needs to have a, 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 a healthy conversation and preferably during a work session where we're, where we're all in the same room. Uh, you know, or, or how committed are you? Because we don't, we don't, if you're, if you're not committed to the project and, and committed to do what may be necessary to advance the project, then, then, then we don't want to move forward with bridge designs and right-of-way acquisitions and those types of things. So um, we, you know, we need to have a conversation about the routing of the project. And then, and then just take the temperature of council, what's your, where, where do you want, when, when do you want to go forward to this project and, and so forth?
Questions on facilities?
So what exactly is the hundred and fifty thou, hundred and fifty thousand for trails and greenways? What exactly is that?
It's going to be a combination of right-of-way acquisition uh, or, or easement, easement acquisition across the proposed route. And then the balance of that would be engineering for the bridge work uh, where, where we do have creek crossings necessary to move forward.
So if I understand correctly, that hundred and fifty thousand uh, would not be uh, activated until we've had this conversation, correct?
Absolutely, and, and that was the point that I wanted to make. You know, we've got, we've got a hundred and fifty thousand, we, we know we're going to have to pull this out of uh, out of fund balance in order to advance the project. Uh, we, we know a lot of people are going to be excited about the project. But we also know that there are going to be people that aren't going to be excited to project, about the project. So council needs to have a healthy conversation about your commitment to the project before we begin to commit resources to it.
Have we, you know, I know you talked about acquisition and this, that, and the other. Have we put a public poll out to get feedback as to what the community, how, what the community is thinking?
No, and we haven't, and it's large, largely due to our COVID uh, time that we've been really over the last eleven months. And as you, you may recall, when we've, when we've discussed this and at, 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 at other opportunities, uh, we've indicated that once it's safe for us all to come together again, that we have to have that meeting. Um, I guess similarly, you know, we, we did have a COVID meeting uh, or, or followed, I guess, the strict COVID protocols when we had a Cedar Street meeting. Uh, the timing on this one is twofold, and one, our engineering uh, uh, department needed to finalize uh, the plans and to know exactly where surveying, know exactly where the route of this uh, this um, proposed first phase would go. So you can begin to have that conversation with the property owners. But, but uh, and, and you all need to, need to see that first phase routing. But before we move forward, we also need to have that community uh, meeting. And, and I think we'll hear, we'll hear certainly people that are very excited and think that this is absolutely where our community needs to go forward. And, and many, many, many progressive communities are having this conversation and are moving forward with projects like this. But there also needs to be the recognition that, that if your property is impacted, you might not be in, be, be in support of the project. And you need to recognize that and uh, and, and weigh the public comment as it comes in. But I think before, before we go forward with certainly bridge design, before we go forward with right-of-way acquisitions, all of those things that I just talked about have to occur, and then you all need to have a conversation internally.
One of, one of the things I was gonna ask about, and I think I mentioned it, I'm sure I mentioned it in a couple of our other work sessions about, about the possibility of thinking a little bit outside the box when we talk about upgrade, uh, upgrading our pool or referred to here as an aquatic facility. If we think about potentially a senior center, or we could even call that um, you know, an activity center, or whatever we may want to. I mean, I think it's something that, you know, our youth can use as well as, you know, our, our seniors. But, you know, if, if there's, so the question I would have is if we were to think about and maybe look at other uh, other areas and see if they have had any ideas or if they're moving forward with any facilities that kind of incorporate pool and aquatic uh, type um, activities along with senior, uh, a senior center or a senior facility. And maybe even, maybe even budget a little bit of money towards uh, uh, an inquiry into such. I'm, I'm curious to know, especially if you involve our seniors in there, if there not, might not be some grants. That might be a Terry Napier question, I, he maybe already could give us the answer. But, you know, are there grants out there that may help along the aquatics facility? If especially if we mix in or, or really gear part of, at least towards our seniors? That'd be question number one, and, well, I'll just leave it at that. I know right now we have a lot of our uh, you know, insurance companies that work with us pertaining to Silver Sneakers. And I guess that's probably Medicare and Medica, I don't know, but I'm, I'm assuming probably Medicare probably contributes in there. So you'd think when you talk about really the, the activities for seniors, there should be some grant money out there. And also it would seem like that a, uh, I mentioned uh, an insurance company, but you know, a large, a large uh, carrier-type insurance company may want to have a facility named after them. Um, and I just think there's some real possibility there of, you know, doing something. So I, I'm just throwing out the idea that maybe what we consider doing is, is doing some investigative work. I don't know if we have the, you know, the manpower to do it, but maybe we hire a company to give us ideas. I'm not wanting to spend a lot of money, of course, but just give us some ideas of some, things that are happening in other areas. Anybody got any thoughts towards that?
Well, Chad, I would, I would say what, what Margaret said earlier is that I think that this is important to our goals and objectives. You know, I have advocated with you um, about a facility of nature, but it takes money. And you're right, we would have to have a, a, a equity partner in this. And um, but having said that, I think it's really important that, that we take a look at this. We, we determine how much, you know, something like this would cost. Um, I've been told when I've been in conversation with, with different ones that have, have seen facilities like this built that we're talking about eighteen to twenty million dollars. Um, that is a lot of money. And one thing that we could talk about, not only in how, what our priorities are in the community, but, but funding and different revenue streams and what we, what we can leverage that might be advantageous to accomplish some of these things. And so I totally support you in this conversation. I think that uh, Margaret had pointed out earlier that uh, swimming is so important. You know, right now we have a community that's not able to participate and to have these lessons. They can go to the Y. It used to be that the school system took all of the fourth grade students to the Y to learn how to swim on an annual basis from all the different elementary schools. I don't know if that program, I don't think it is, is still in effect. But, but swimming is really important. And as, as if COVID has taught us anything, it's that we really do need to work towards being a healthier community. My kids have told me, Mom, you don't need to be concerned about COVID as much as the drive-through at some of the fast food restaurants, that they're doing more to your heart to kill you than anything else. And I think we've got to raise awareness in our community to have a healthier community. And I think that people coming into our community are looking for those types of amenities for quality of life. It's not, while I think that it is about public safety, it is about the fire stations. It's also providing those amenities of quality of life that will attract people to our community that will increase our sales tax, our property tax, and everything else that we consider important revenue streams. So I support you, Chad.
I, I think along this same conversation, Tim has a slide in here of, I guess, those things that are, are financially not feasible at the current uh, with, and, and I, I think you're right, Chad. That's, you know, are there naming rights, are there, are there grants, are there, are there other things out there that might, that might help advance a project? I think also the, the number of, of uh, twenty million dollars on, on, on a large indoor aquatic facility and senior facility, that's probably a pretty good number. And if you remember, our aquatic facility talked about that, and then it talked about something that was probably more within our, our fiscal capacity. Uh, and that was a three to four million dollar um, pool. But, and, but Tim's going to talk about those in the presentation of those things that aren't currently in the five-year window. And, and aquatic facilities, one of those. Uh, senior, senior citizen facility is not part of that discussion either. So uh, if tho, if those are things that you want to go, that's great, you're absolutely right. Those are things that, that take this community to the next level, but there has to be a source of funding to, to move forward with.
Well, and, and, and Lee mentioned a, a potential partner, but there are other, are other partners out there, especially in our college community that are in need of that type of facility. Um, you mentioned the YMCA, um, you know, and how, who knows what kind of potential they may have in a partnership as well. But, you know, the, the, the trails and greenways gets, gets right back to, it could, could all be kind of tied together. If uh, you know, if we had more guidance from maybe where, you know, uh, companies have helped other municipalities in the direction. So, yeah, I appreciate that conversation.
Any other questions on facilities? Uh, next, and like we'd spoken before, the school system, I did not provide any updates on that. We will have those updates ultimately in the document, once we receive them from the school system as they figure out what to spend on capital projects with that additional money they just recently received. Uh, transportation, about eight point nine million, a little bit over eight point nine million. Uh, you can see the projects, most of that is finishing up East Cedar Street project, the one that is uh, under construction and has long been uh, complete, or not completed, but uh, long been due. Uh, it's good to see it under construction and things moving well out there. Uh, proposing to finish that up in probably fiscal year twenty twenty-three is when that will finish up, hopefully before then. But uh, putting some money there in twenty-three right now, showing that. Uh, Buff City Highway sidewalks, uh, that showing up to have the construction begin in FY twenty twenty-two. That is in the environmental phase right now, soon to be released to uh, purchase any necessary easements or right-of-way for that project. Um, finish that construction up, probably will can extend into FY twenty twenty-three right now, based on the timing we have. Some uh, bridge uh, renovations and repairs. Uh, this year, we've worked on Broad Street, getting ready to put some guard rail up on the side of it, on the uh, north side of that structure and work on some concrete pairs there. And these are other bridges per bridge inspection reports to finish them up. Island Road Northeast, that project's under construction. The city doesn't have any dollars in this, this is a fifty-fifty uh, interstate access money from the state for the Center Point Seventy-four Development Relocating Island Road to the east about four hundred and fifty feet. Uh, the private contributions are paying for the other half of those expenses. We're just getting reimbursed on the back end from both the state and the private contributions, but that is underway. Uh, it will stretch into FY twenty twenty-two, so hopefully that'll be finished up before winter. Uh, State Street Bridge Replacement, I have this in here, it's just, and you'll see it again. Uh, it's about one point eight million dollars. The city would be ha, responsible for half of that as far as the, our side of town, nine hundred thousand. The state would pay eighty thousand or eighty percent of that nine hundred thousand, and the city would be responsible for twenty percent or a hundred and eighty thousand. It's in an out year because it does take cooperation with our sister city and the Virginia Department of Transportation. Uh, it is in the Improve Act for the state of Tennessee, and we're working with Virginia T-Dot and V-Dot on timing of that project. Traffic signal modifications, this is just upgrading and remaining traffic signals to LEDs over the next several years. Uh, Virginia Avenue Sidewalk Extension is in here because it's a projected twenty twenty-one um, completion. It is completed now, so it's in there because it was completed. I guess I should have gone to this slide, but I've covered all this slide, uh, just on that one previously. Any questions on, anything on transportation? Uh, the next section would be our utility section, twelve point seven six three million. Once again, the majority of that's wastewater treatment and plant improvements and upgrades. Um, you can see the list here, next fiscal year, three point two eight million dollars proposed. And looking at the highlights, would start our automated meter reading systems, ten years old, the technology's outdated, and we need to get better technology. And actually, the company that uh, provided that product for us is uh, out of business now. So, but it has reached the end of its design life, and this would be the replacement of that system over a five-year period. Approximately one point two million dollars, that's about fourteen thousand transmitters that would need to be replaced and the receiving equipment and software over that period. Uh, East End Water Improvements, this would be some further improvements in FY twenty-two to twenty-five along King College Road from Trammell Road to Middlebrook Area. And also out further on the east end, looking at some opportunities to loop our system out on the east end to provide uh, more service delivery points for that area. Sanitary Sewer System Improvements, this is uh, looking for things from a paving schedule. Some of the projects are like a portion of Taylor Street from Pennsylvania Avenue to Carolina Avenue. Also, this would include some INI improvements that we've identified needing to be taken care of in the next five years or a couple of years. Uh, Shelby Street Booster Station Improvements, this is our Shelby Street Water Booster Station. And it's put in an out year, we started putting it at twenty-four, twenty-five. We know that as demand increases out on that end of town, at some point it will need to be upgraded and improved to meet that demand. Uh, we put this in this year as a placeholder for uh, that booster station. We did have a hydraulic study on that booster station performed in the last, you know, twelve months, so. Volunteer Parkway Improvements, this is a replacement of a water line along the Parkway from Weaver Pike up to around the uh, uh, Wilson Avenue area. Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements, once again, that's majority improvements, eight point nine million dollars over the next five years. Uh, currently, we're undergoing uh, design of a grit removal system, a new grit removal system at the headworks to the To the wastewater plant. Uh that will be under construction. Uh hopefully this uh fiscal year or FY twenty two fiscal year. Design should be finishing up uh this fiscal year. Uh also, that includes looking further down the road, starting the design and then construction of the. De-watering system for the wastewater plant to replace the belt filter presses that have been in operation since the inception of the plant. They've been rebuilt a at least one time completely, each one of them, but. They've reached their design life and their efficiencies have uh dropped some because of their age. And this would be a complete replacement of those. But this number is a pay as you go. We do not borrow money for the wastewater plant. We have, we bank money every year for big capital improvements. We just finished Aeration Basins last year. Uh improvements to those to put in the fine bubbler system and the new blowers. Uh see some a lot, actually seeing some good energy savings from those new blowers. But this is our continued effort to uh keep the wastewater treatment plant up to date and to anticipate future flows and needs there. Water filtration plan over five years, eight hundred sixty five thousand. These are improvements to the. Water plant next year would be to finalize our telemetry system to our tanks and booster stations. And then there are other motor control center upgrades and things that need to occur once again in a water plant over the life of a water plant. And we typically spread those out once again over five years and. Depending on, you know, a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars a year, just looking at the major improvements there. Are there any questions on the utility section?
For those that are maybe watching this, that that don't ha- don't understand how we fund this particular part. Mr. Sora or Mr. Beavers, would y'all care to speak to, uh I know you had talked about our uh. Wastewater Treatment Plant, the Water Filtration Plant. Um. Most of these expenses are covered through our enterprise funds, is that correct?
That that's correct. Uh there 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 what we refer to as either an enterprise fund or proprietary fund. And they're funded by water and sewer rates. Um the wastewater treatment plant in particular is a jointly. A jointly owned and jointly funded with our sister city and those proportions. Uh in terms of funding the operation are flow based, uh based on a calendar year. And so the operations piece of that. Uh typically, we cover the capital uh uh items such as these on a fifty fifty basis on that, so. But the the water system and the and the sanitary sewer system must stand on 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 their own two feet. But we have other uh funds that that are rate payer driven, our solid waste fund is what's referred to as a special revenue fund. And it allows uh for the general fund to make contributions if there's a gap in expenses uh over revenues that are there. Uh but uh but from a from a proprietary fund or an enterprise fund perspective. Uh our water and sewer funds are are as they are and if if our rates do not cover the cost of expense of expenditures. Then they are subject to to regulatory enforcement from the Comptel's office.
And so having said that comparatively speaking, how do our water and sewer rates, stormwater rates compare to the rest of the region?
Um if you're looking at a rural utility district, we are, we are quite favorable. Uh I think we're quite favorable in comparison to rates to Bristol, Virginia. Um I think we're we're really favorable to Kingsport or John City also, our stormwater rates. And that's referred to as a proprietary fund, but but statutes do allow us to uh subsidize. Our stormwater fund from general fund proceeds, but uh two dollars uh per equivalent residential unit. Is probably the lowest rate that you're going to find anywhere uh in a stormwater utility.
Thank you.
Any other questions on utilities? Uh next, as Mr. Sora had mentioned before, we'll talk some uh future projects, some that you've brought up, the activity center you won't see here. It's something we'll have to look at. Um but some you can see, uh City Aquatic Facility, four million dollars, three to four million. Now, this number would be based on just replacing a pool, putting a in-ground pool, zero entry pool. It's not uh to build a. Aquatic building, an indoor-outdoor or anything like that. Obviously, you'd have restrooms and associated things to service that pool. Changing rooms, but it does not include an indoor component or any what like Kingsport or the Coombe Center or things like that. This is just for your basic zero entry pool, like you know, outside to uh replace. And that's between three and four million dollars, depending on size and location and you know, the configuration of it. As Bill had mentioned, the report to do a aquatic facility by itself fif- probably fifteen million dollars plus. Just to do something similar to uh some of our neighbors around us. So that's just the four million numbers, the number we're using just is to replace uh in-ground pool with the appropriate changing facilities. And restrooms and service uh facilities there. Uh Farmer's Market, a million dollars. Uh this would be for looking at. Putting of in an existing building, the Farmer's Market in an existing building and upgrading that building and. Trying to meet the needs. Now, by doing that, you could, and I know Mr. Napier is on here. You know, you could see some more year-round use from other activities in that building. But we have looked at some buildings around downtown and. Uh this was a number that we put together based on purchasing and renovating a building that we had looked at. To just get a number where we could at least have some idea of what that would take. Uh there's nothing magic about locating it around downtown, but that's just, you know, it's not in the immediate. But it's right adjacent to what you would call the core downtown area, so that's just an opportunity there. But Trails and Greenways, and you say, well, Tim, you had a number back on the other one for Trails and Greenways. Well, there was a actual Trails and Greenways study that talked about a bunch of Trails and Greenways. And that number in that study, which included the what we're calling the Bieber Creek South Trail. Was over fifty million dollars for all the trails listed in that study that you all have seen and have a copy of. So that's why I put a bunch of dollar signs there because they are very expensive, depending on the location. And that study runs through them all, really good study, but it, like I said, the total number in that study, I believe, actually was fifty five million plus. And that included the uh trail that we had earlier in there, that segment of the trail, so. It is projects that are out there that, you know, it does cost dollars to do projects like that. Uh we talked about State Street Bridge Replacement, hundred and eighty thousand would be our share of that. And that's in an out year, once again, based on working with our sister city and V dot. To uh get that project underway, very much needed project. Library, we did not put a sheet in for library needs. They have submitted sheet to us for a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars. And that's looking at things like uh improvements to their entryway, uh some bathroom improvements. Improvements to their uh rotunda. And just uh like I said, capital facility improvements, we didn't put that sheet in there, but their total. Request on that sheet was a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars and that would be our share of that request, not. Uh that would assuming Bristol, Virginia would pick up the other half of that money.
Tim, let let me just a second. Um the um. One of the conversations that I've had with our our sister city is the necessity or the need. To go back and revisit the bylaws, uh how we share costs. Uh we've, we've been contributing more than our. Sister city has in recent years to the operations of the library. There needs to be a clearly defined um. Pathway forward in terms of how we fund operations, how we fund uh capital replacement. You know, the the new library is now fifteen, sixteen years old. So and it's it's starting to 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 have needs that 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 should be met by both cities. And then there's also some issues hanging out there regarding whose employees are they? Uh you know, what what are 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 they entitled to in terms of of uh benefits? In terms of participating uh with healthcare programs offered by one city or the other or retirement and so forth then. And while I believe the bylaws as they're written, pretty specifically spell this out. Um I I I think that's not universally accepted, so. One of the goals that we'll have uh in there for next year will be to um to to revisit. The bylaws of the library and and how the two cities jointly work together um for library services.
I'll just add in that um also, there is not a way to account for in-kind. Um for the payroll and HR support, et cetera, that's been provided in the past as well, so. Primarily by Bristol, Virginia, those in-kind, those in-kind. We've also had in-kind on our side with consulting on building maintenance and some different things, so. Anyway, um hopefully that'll be looked at when things are revisited.
Tim, that one thirty three, that that real number is two sixty six, correct?
Yes, I believe so. I forgot to bring that sheet in here with me. I meant to, but uh. I think that is the number is two sixty six. And it's roughly half, I mean, there is some thing, uh some carpet at a voca library that was in there that we're a hundred percent. Responsible for. Um so it might not be exactly one thirty three each city, so but that is. That's the num- the number. And once again, I just forgot, sorry, I apologize. I forgot to bring that sheet in with me. Uh go ahead. No, go ahead, please.
Um we were, you were talking about the farmer's market and uh. Is is what is being considered a building that could be used for a farmer's market, but could also be used as a multipurpose facility? That could uh where different events could be housed there. Uh I know I had talked with Terry about. And I never say this right, still in being building of some nature where we could host. Like uh youth tournaments, pickleball tournaments, um different things of that nature and uh. To develop a revenue stream so that while we may be spending a million dollars to establish a building of this nature. We would have revenue streams coming in that could uh support its financing.
I think the opportunity is there for some revenue streams. Uh. Certainly, it's a smaller building and you wouldn't be hosting some bigger events there. And the ceiling heights of the building would limit you on some of the things you could host in there, but. Mr. Napier and I have spoken about revenue streams, additional use of the uh facility, especially during the winter months. Uh you know, when people move indoors from doing things, so that is an opportunity that is there with that building, yes.
So will we, would y'all have a plan together to to talk maybe at an additional work session about revenue streams? And the multi-use of the facility, or is the expectation that we would approve something like this and then get that information?
Well, I think in the facility that they're talking about, when I think of it, I think pickleball would be, would be, it could be accommodated there. Uh Tim mentioned the high ceilings, I think basketball would be, would be difficult, you know, there. And I I don't think the footprint's really large enough to do much with that either. Pickleball's certainly doable. Um.
Playing perhaps a wrestling tournament?
I'm sorry. Um. Thinking about that footprint, you could probably get a couple of mats in there. Um but I don't know that you would have much in terms of 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 available space for seating, those types of things. You you probably could get a couple of mats in there, maybe maybe as many as three mats in there trying to vision out. Uh trying to envision the facility now, but without telegraphing too much about, you know, the property being explored.
Well, and then in a completely different direction, I know we had talked about, when you talk about entrepreneurs and you talk about uh. Food product development would be a a uh clean kitchen. If I'm using the term correctly, one that is certified by the health department where different entrepreneurs that are interested in developing food products. For sale could come and put their product together. Would it have the potential capacity to have such a clean kitchen area?
Uh I'm gonna let Terry answer that. He's far more familiar, especially being in the restaurant business, with the. The requirements for that would be, far more familiar than I would be, so Terry, is that something that could be accommodated in this in this building?
Absolutely. The 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 first thought we had would be to at least put a cater's kitchen in, uh making the the space. Usable for, you know, events, receptions, parties, whatever. Uh could it be a? Um a retail-based kitchen, absolutely. Um you know. We have a couple of opportunities. It may be more practical to invest that money in the kitchen here at Slater. Uh to make this a usable kitchen than to build one there, uh if we want to go that route. So there's, there's several, uh we have several opportunities to do that.
It's just important that, you know, as we look at all of these different options, that we get as big a bang for our buck as we possibly can. And when we talk about entrepreneurial development, this this could be a contributing factor to that. And really, uh I think a lot of people might be interested in that right now.
Yeah, the 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 kitchen is, I mean, it it prohibits a lot of people who are trying to get, you know, whether it's. Doing baked goods or whatever. Uh the state did give some allowance uh on using home kitchens, non-certified. Uh they've made it a little bit easier, you just have to label, you know, that it's produced in a uh a non-health department certified kitchen. You can do it. Uh so there have been some changes, but I think there's still a need uh to to do the the kitchen. And of course, you know, my uh. There's, there's several places we could do it, if that's what we wanted to.
Thank you.
Uh moving down and when we look at this slide, once again, we're concentrating really on the uh general fund. Uh Public Works Facility, looking at a, put it in an out year now, the ten point six million dollar total. With the general fund uh supporting about six and a, you know, sixty five percent of that based on square footage needs. But it would be a possibility to fund that and lease back, the general fund leased it. But once again, looking at our model, it doesn't appear to be feasible at this time. To do anything in the next five years with that, looking at our financial model unless some additional revenue streams are identified for that.
You know, one of the key barometers, one of the metrics that we look at when we put together the C I P is. Is our five-year or our multi-year, not a five-year, but our multi-year financial model and 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 the predictability of revenue streams. And 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 all of y'all have seen us uh demonstrate uh through those models, what we can and what we feel like we need to do. And when when we may go negative in terms of cash flow and so forth going forward. Uh for the Public Works Facility, you know, like I said, the the debt service can be easily satisfied by our utility fund. Uh the challenge would be for our general fund to lease that space back and financially, it's not there right now.
Uh the next item's ADA improvements, and I've got question marks there, but over the next, okay, go ahead, Malin.
Back up on the Public Works Facility just for a second, would, are there elements of that that? That could be done uh at different times, or are we looking at trying to do the whole thing at one time?
Uh I mean, certainly, anything can be phased. Uh I think ideally, you acquire the property and. And you borrow the money to to go ahead and and do the project, but certainly, anything anything can be phased, there's, there's, you can. Uh you can look at at different ways to approach a project.
Thanks.
Do y'all have, uh do you have anything that you could present to us in a work session as to how that could be phased?
I think probably the, not not so much phasing because we hadn't contemplated that, but we do have property identified. Obviously, we wouldn't want to do that in an open session, but I I think that's something that we could schedule a Zoom meeting with our consultant. To uh to talk through, um you know, how we would move forward with a particular property that's that's been identified. And uh and then the construction uh of the of the facility on that particular footprint. I think that's, that's a good Zoom construct, good Zoom conversation, uh but done, done on an individual basis.
Thank you.
Uh ADA improvements, I have question marks there. We do have ADA needs that we need to address over the next thirty years. With our sidewalks and facilities. Uh the reason question marks on dollar amounts is there are some low-hanging fruit that we can take. Uh, the reason question marks on dollar amounts is there are some low hanging fruit that we can take care of over the upcoming year, you know, next few years, such as handrails, grab rails, intern-, you know, little small things internally, but then you get in some bigger dollar items that, uh, we will have to develop and get some cost development on that and some help from some firms, construction firms, architectural firms on what all would need to be done to address things like bathroom improvements, some of the bigger bathroom improvements, uh, you know, just think of the Slater Center and bathrooms and ADA. Uh, so it will, over the next decades, the city will have to spend money on ADA improvements, uh, to our facilities and our, uh, infrastructure. And that's why we put question marks right there. Like I said, we are doing sidewalk projects in Fairmount area and trying to address those with grants as we get them, uh, on that side. But there are some bigger things to look at sidewalks when it comes to utility poles that restrict access to some of them that are bigger projects even in the sidewalk realm. And then once again, you look at your facilities and older facilities and how do we, uh, address the bigger needs? And that's what we'll be looking at is coming up with some uh, dollar amounts to start including in the capital budget over the upcoming years. So that's why the question marks on ADA improvements there. Uh, these are some we looked at the, uh, identified, like I said, projects we've looked at and talked about and appear some of them in the CIP sheets as out-year projects, or we looked at the comprehensive plan and some other plans and tried to identify those needs. Like I said, we didn't have the, uh, activity center in there having, uh, assigned the cost or anything like that to that project. But, uh, any questions on future projects?
Again, uh, the, uh, the proposed, um, uh, capital expenditures for fiscal 2022 were identified earlier. Uh, but again, this is, this is still a bit of a moving target. We're still refining, uh, uh, revenue estimates. We, and while, while Tara and I have met with probably two thirds of the departments, we haven't met with all of them yet. So we're, we're still in the process of, of compiling uh, our budget. So this is our, our best stab at it at this point.
Any other questions on the CIP? Thank you.
Okay. Mayor, if, if, are we, I think we're, since we're ready to move on to our proposed text amendment for um, ordinance, uh, for, and our zoning ordinance for section 217. If you're, if you're ready to head, head in that direction? Okay. All right. There we go.
Yeah, let it roll.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, over the past several months, our, our planning commission has uh, reviewed section 217 of our zoning ordinance as it relates to special use permits. The primary focus of their discussion, uh, surrounded the lack of a sunset provision for permits following their approval. Uh, but, uh, and currently there's, there's no sunset provision. And I think the recommendation coming out of the planning commission is that, uh, if, if a special use permit is approved, which is under the purview of the planning commission, but no activity, uh, has, has occurred to advance that project within a 24-month period, then, then the, the SUP would be allowed to sunset. In addition, uh, some of the language around the, uh, surrounding the, the SUP, uh, would, is proposed, uh, to be amended to provide, once again, clarity, uh, in, in certain requirements regarding project concept plans. Uh, Sherith Young, our planning services manager, uh, she's with us today to, to really dive down into the proposed amendments. Uh, if, if it's, if it's all right with council, then once, once it's concluded, once our discussion today's concluded, we'll, we'll, we will place it on our, our March agenda for formal consideration. This is a, uh, an amendment for an ordinance. So it does require two readings and a public hearing. Sherith?
Thank you, Mr. Sora. Um, good morning, everyone. Um, so as, as stated, um, this is a project that was initially intro- introduced or initiated by the planning commission. Um, the discussion that, that the planning commission had had, um, on a couple of different occasions was they wish to have some sort of, um, end target for special use applications and permits should someone not act on them. So as Mr. Sora stated, um, right now, if you're approved for a special use permit application, there is no expiration. There's no time limits on what, what you're approved for. And the planning commission thought that that was important to add. Um, so what the proposal that you all have, um, to review, um, today and at your, your next meeting is a proposal to add a regulation that would state that if a special use permit is not implemented within a 24-month window of its final approval by the planning commission, it would become void. And for the purposes of the ordinance, um, the term implement would mean a building permit had been secured for the project. So not that the project has to be constructed and complete and the door is open, but just that that permit would have to be, um, approved. So there is, um, movement forward on a project. Um, as Mr. Sora stated, we actually, we also added some new language to cover, um, what is required in a concept plan. So, um, folks for years and years and years have been submitting concept plans for the planning commission to review along with their, their request for an application for a, um, a permit. And there really were, were no parameters around what the expectations were for that concept plan, nor was there anything for staff to provide an applicant to say, here's what the planning commission will be looking for. Here's some, um, information about on your plan so that the planning commission can, um, get a good idea of what you're proposing and you can have an easier time explaining your project to them. So we did add some language to cover the development of a required concept plan. Um, the planning commission did, uh, discuss this over several meetings uh, for several months and they did, um, vote to send a favorable recommendation to the city council on this, um, proposal during their meeting on January 25th of this year. So I'll just quickly go through. I've got kind of a red line slide so you can see exactly what is changing. And then I've got a clean copy slide so you can see what the zoning ordinance will look like should city council approve this text amendment. So first up is the red line slide. So here you see a new number two in red. So this is going to cover what should be on that special use permit site plan. So that's going to include some just foundational information, um, contact information, addresses, floodplain information, um, setback information. So just all the general, um, items that are needed to review a project and to, to consider the criteria, the special use permit criteria that the planning commission is given when they review projects. So this, this mirrors largely our site plan, um, application requirements. So hopefully people will have a, um, kind of leg up once they go to, to file for a site plan application, uh, in using this criteria. But this is what would be the general expectation for a concept plan or site plan and that the planning commission will receive for review uh, when they looked at a site plan application. So uh, here you can see we're largely just renumbering in this section. No, no major changes here. There's one correction down at the bottom of the screen. We're just correcting a section number that had changed at some point in time. So we're correcting that. And then here on this last slide, uh, right, the last red line slide, you can see what we kind of went through as far as, um, making changes, um, with planning commission guidance as far as that expiration um, idea. So this is where it's going to say in the, in the zoning ordinance that unless you um, have that building permit issued within 24 months of your approval, that your, um, special use permit would become void. And, uh, number, that's number 10, number 11 is going to say that, um, it's only, a special use permit is valid only for the property described in the permit application and only for the use presented by the applicant to the planning commission. And then the final item, number 12 is going to talk about that if the planning commission approves a special use permit application, that it should be constructed and operate in conformance with what the planning commission approved. And any modification would need to go back to the planning commission for a revision. So on this slide, this is just the final uh, clean copy, um, that the planning commission voted to, to send forward to city council for review. They made one minor, uh, very minor edit in number two, which is to replace a a technical term of bearings with courses. Uh, so we made that change. And, um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or flip back and forth to the, to the red line copy. But, um, that's the, that's the proposal in a nutshell, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
See, Mailer, I think you're on mute.
Okay. Sorry about the hearing. Now I guess we're ready to move on to the next item.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, late last year, uh, staff received a request from the Living Water Baptist Church, which is located uh, at 1806 Kentucky Avenue, uh, to abandon a portion of Willow Street, which extends into, uh, extends, I guess, to the, uh, to the west of Kentucky Avenue. And the, the, the property and, uh, and it's illustrated here on your screen. Uh, the, the block, the area that's highlighted in blue is the requested abandonment. Uh, all of the properties surrounding this requested abandonment is owned by, by the church and they are requesting the abandonment so that there, they could build a fellowship hall across all of the properties after they are recombined. Uh, David Metzger, our transportation engineer is with us today and he's going to further detail this issue. David?
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon. As Mr. Sora indicated, we were approached by the Living Water Baptist Church uh, late last year. They are looking at to, uh, construct additional facilities association with their church properties, a fellowship hall and such as that. And in order to do so, they were interested in getting the westernmost block of Willow Street abandoned as a public right of way. As the slide indicates there on your screen, all the church property is highlighted in yellow. Their sanctuary is down in the lower right-hand corner of that yellow area. Uh, they do have two houses on that property at 304 and 308 Willow Street, one of which has now been used for storage and one of which is their current fellowship hall. The diagram shows a house also at 309 Willow Street at the far end of the, uh, dead end. That house has been demolished and that property is now vacant. When they came to us, they were interested in getting this right of way abandoned so that when they build their fellowship hall, which they're looking to do at the property up at the northern end, where it's labeled 1716 and 1720 Kentucky Avenue, they were interested in getting the right of way abandoned so that they would get some setback relief and possibly be able to build a larger building. Uh, the design of which and the size of which has to be determined by how much right of way would be, uh, acquired through abandonment, if any. And so they came to us requesting this abandonment. We had looked through several things that, uh, is standard for our abandonment process. Uh, Tim, if you could advance to the next slide, please. Uh, this is a line drawn. It shows the area, uh, that we're looking at. The church properties are outlined in red. The right of way of Willow Street, typically when we do a right of way abandonment, we retain a utility and stormwater easement over the entire uh, former right of way. If we were to do that in this case, that really doesn't help them any because they wouldn't get any setback relief because they couldn't build any part of their buildings or have any part of the setbacks contained in what is now the public right of way of Willow Street. So we did, went through a utility search and all the typical public utilities that you see on a public street are in this block of Willow Street, except for natural gas. However, all of them are clustered together along the southern right of way line of Willow Street. And so we looked at where those utilities were located and how wide a utility strip we would need and this kind of thing. And what we determined is that instead of, uh, looking at an abandonment and keeping a utility easement for the entire right of way of only retaining a utility easement for the southern half of it, which is the area shown in light gray on this slide, which is basically 25 feet wide and down the length of the right of way, which is 155 feet long. Some of the utilities are so close to the edge of this right of way, however, that that still doesn't leave you sufficient room on each side of the utility line. And so what we talked to the church about doing was on those properties that are to the south of the right of way being proposed at 300, 304 and 308 Willow Street is dedicating an additional six-foot utility easement on those properties. It would be outside of the, uh, proposed abandoned right of way. The, that allows us to have the sufficient utility width on each side of the existing utilities. It also stays outside of the existing buildings that are there. The fourth issue that came up with utilities, if you look on the left-hand side of the light gray area is a dotted line and that is a private utility line. The water meter for the house at 1692 Arkansas Avenue is actually on Willow Street and the private service line crosses the church property. So we would require them to have a private utility easement across their property so they could continue to serve, uh, the water line there without having to move water lines and water meters and all that kind of stuff. So in the end, what we, uh, advised the church, what we could look at is if this full 50-foot wide right of way width was abandoned, we would retain the utility of stormwater easements in the southern half, 25 foot wide, which is the light gray area. We would not retain any easements in the black northern half, which is also 25 foot wide. And that way, when they go through a plating process, that would provide some, some additional relief as far as setbacks and building size are concerned. Uh, we did advise them that a combination plat would be required because you, if you uh, do a right of way abandonment without the plat, you have properties here that would have no public road frontage, which is a violation of state law. If you did the, uh, abandonment without the right of way, then you have this area cut out of the middle. So this is one of these items, kind of like we did a few months ago on Leona Street, where the church is developing the combination plat and that's in the process. And once it's all set and ready to go, that we would hold off recording that until such time as the abandonment becomes effective and set it up so they would become effective simultaneously. Cause otherwise it's sort of a chicken and an egg kind of proposition, which is what we did on Leona Street a few months ago. Some of the other aspects we looked at, there is an existing street light on you, on Willow Street and, uh, the church has agreed to take over the, uh, operation and maintenance of that as a private security light. And then as far as public input is concerned, since the church is the sole adjacent property owner, we didn't seek any additional public input because the only people that's affected are the church properties. So the, uh, recommendations that we made to the planning commission at their, uh, last meeting that they had was to go ahead and abandon the right of way of Willow Street, only retaining the utility and stormwater easement in the southern half, which was 25 foot wide and approximately 155 foot deep, that they would have to dedicate an additional six-foot utility easement on their own property along the southerly right of way, and then the private utility easement that would serve that house at 1692 Arkansas Avenue. Uh, church has agreed that all these, uh, conditions are acceptable to them. This was presented to the planning commission in February at their meeting and they unanimously voted to uh, pass along to city council a favorable recommendation for that abandonment. So if you have any questions, I'll see what I can do to answer them.
Okay. If there are no questions, this item will be, uh, placed on your, um, March second agenda for formal consideration than our first week.
Okay. Well, we'll move on to the next item, uh, item number eight, rezoning request, 121 Bless City Highway.
Yes, Mayor, um, this item is a request by the property owner, Mr. Garrett Addington. Uh, as you mentioned, it's 121 Bless City Highway. And this is the commercial development, a commercial strip development that's located just north of Haynesville Elementary School. Uh, the request is for the property to be rezoned, V1B neighborhood shopping office zone to B3 general business district. The rezoning will, will do a couple of things. It will provide a, a, a greater opportunity for leasing of the space by, by the, by the, the property owner, as well as the opportunity to install an electronic message board. And we, we as a staff did, 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 uh, did have an error uh, in that when the, um, the property, the owner did request uh, an electronic message board early on, we erroneously did issue, um, a permit for that sign. And then subsequent to that recognized that the, that the existing zoning was not consistent, uh, with allowing electronic message boards. And that prompted the discussion for the rezoning. Um, the property as, as I'm sure Ms. Young's going to get into, uh, across the street is B3. And the school property located immediately south does have the ability to install electronic message board. But, uh, this matter was considered by the planning commission, uh, at their February meeting and they do forward, um, a unanimous recommendation, uh, to support the rezoning request. Sherith?
Thank you. Um, so as Mr. Sora stated, this is a rezoning request.
So as Mr. Sora stated, this is a rezoning request to go from the B1B zone to B3. The applicant and owner is Mr. Garrett Addington. The address is 121 Bluff City Highway, and this property is approximately 0.4 acres in size. And we'll go to the map, the zoning map next, and talk just a little bit about this. So the parcel in question is, is highlighted in yellow here, so you can see it fronts on Bluff City Highway. You have Haynesfield just beside, which is known to R2, and you have B3 across the street on Bluff City Highway. So as Mr. Sora state, stated, we did mistakenly issue the sign permit here, but as we were looking for some solutions to this issue, noted that the zoning map here does support B3 in this area. And in terms of the electronic message board issue, both, all the properties across the street and the school were all eligible to have an electronic message board, but, but since this property is actually zone B1B, it could not. So these are the surrounding zones, you have B1B, B3, and R2. And then the existing uses in the area are office use, commercial use, school, of course, use. You do have a single-family residential home that's in behind this property, but it's also zoned B1B. And then you have some commercial use to the west. So here are a few, just two pictures of the site here, which Mr. Addington's doing some great work to improve this building here. So this is looking at the building from Bluff City Highway, and then we have one photo just looking from the other direction, I believe. I may have had it in there twice. Okay, but he's doing some great work here to really improve this building. It looks really good. The uses here, and I won't read this all to you, I know you'll probably get tired of this slide sometimes, but want to make sure everybody's aware of what the B1B and B3 uses are. So here are the B1B uses. So you'll see it does allow for single-family homes, duplexes, and then some limited retail trade office-type businesses. It does allow for full-service restaurants. And then there are some special use permit uses here, some public-private utility buildings, churches, and daycare centers are among the special use permit list. If you look at the B3 list, you can see it expands some to allow quite a bit more commercial uses, and this could be beneficial to Mr. Addington in the future, should he decide to take on another tenant or to lease out some space to a different business. There'll certainly be more expanded options for him in the future, should he ever choose to do that. So these are the permitted uses and the special use items in the B3 zone. Next, we have an excerpt from the future land use map. So this map indicates, the red designation indicates commercial land classification. So this property is solidly in that commercial land use classification, and it's definitely something that we looked at in analyzing this request and, and recommendation, in preparing the recommendation to the planning commission. So there is commercial here in the area, and definitely this parcel is designated as a, as a commercial use. Also, there are two policies we identified in our future land use plan that support this rezoning request, and that's number three and number six. Number three says that we should look to sustain existing commercial areas while providing for adequate and compatible growth and expansion. Policy six specifically talks about encouraging the redevelopment of underutilized land and buildings to capitalize on existing infrastructure and services. So we felt that both these policies applied in this request. We did place public notification signs on the property, and adjacent property owners were notified by letter of the request for this rezoning. Today, as of today, we've received one telephone call, and that was a person that was just basically inquiring about what was going on. They didn't support or didn't express any kind of support or opposition on this project. The planning commission did review this during their last meeting on February 15th, and they did unanimously vote to forward a favorable recommendation to city council for the requested rezoning. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I will say this in support of making this zoning change. It's unbelievable, the transformation that he has done with this building, and as we've always said, the zoning follows the property, not necessarily the business occupying it at the moment, but I think the improvements that have been made certainly justify the transition from the B1, B1B to B3, and I think it's a great recommendation and a great project.
It's going a long way from a chicken house, hasn't it? Looks, looks really nice. Any other question or comments?
No, I agree with everybody. It's going to be a really nice place. The work he's done so far makes it look really attractive to the area and around it.
Okay, hearing no more, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item. Annexation request 26, excuse me, 2467 Weaver Pike.
Yes, Mayor, staff received an annexation request from Mr. and Mrs. Joshua Roberts, owner of residential property located at 2467 Weaver Pike. The owners, quite frankly, desire municipal services, which included our police and fire protection, solid waste services, sanitary sewer service, and then certainly access to municipal school system for their children. The property encompasses approximately 1.49 acres. It's located adjacent to the existing corporate limits. It's, it's just, it's very close. It's across the street, very close to the interest of partnership part two. The, the request was presented to our planning commission at their February 15th meeting and receives a unanimous vote to, to forward a favorable recommendation. This is handled a little bit different than, than, than the old annexation by ordinance. What will, what will happen, we'll move forward with March section, second, with a resolution establishing a public hearing in April for the subject of, of annexation, and then there'll be a, a subsequent vote in, in April. So you'll have essentially two votes on this, as well as, as a vote in April on an ordinance establishing the zoning for the property. So with that, Tim, would you like to review the annexation?
Yes, Mr. Sora covered a lot of information on this first slide here. It was a request from Mr. and Mrs. Roberts for 2467 Weaver Pike and annexation, 1.49 acres. They do live in the home. You see the state appraisal value in this, you can read all that. Approximate city taxes at the current rate, we would receive $784.51 should it be annexed. The property you can see here in yellow, I hope that shows up well on your TV. Sometimes colors don't come through as well as they look on a computer screen, but this is the property right here. It's right across. This is the partnership part two entrance, Partnership Park Road right here. The pink part is inside, the current property is inside the corporate limits. The Weaver Pike is already incorporated into the city, and then Partnership Park, 394 in the city. And then at upper right, you'll see the back of the industrial park, the Bristol Industrial Park. This property, this annexation would be contiguous annexation, which is very important as far as the steps we would have to go through for an annexation, but it is contiguous because Weaver Pike is currently inside the corporate limits. The next slide, a plan of services that we have, and you have the actual plan of services in your packet, I just summarized them here. Effective immediately, should it be annexed, you have police and fire, refuse collection, access to all our facilities and programs, access to city schools. Currently, they have two children in the city's pool system and are paying tuition. Yeah, access to all our planning zoning, building code, CDBG services. The water service is currently through South Fork Utility District, and that will be no change of water service. Electric service is currently provided through BTES, and that's no change anticipated. And then currently, we do maintain the street under a state highway maintenance agreement. That is a state route, but we do maintain that under an agreement with PHS. So the code is currently maintained by us. Short-term, we do have an extension of public sanitary sewer service within one year. Currently, let me turn the laser pointer back on here. Mouse will cooperate. Currently, the sewer is located, and this is not working well, but the sewer is located in this area. It's about 150 feet away on the southwest side of Weaver Pike. We would extend that 150-foot under Weaver Pike to the property, a service line. It would just be a service line. We anticipate that cost for the sewer extension to be less than $1,500 in material. City staff would provide that extension, city crews. Council and school district, both would be West District for city council and the West School District upon effective date of annexation. And one thing, as Mr. Sora mentioned, that would come up should the annexation move forward is the assignment of zoning. Currently, the property is zoned R1 in Sullivan County. So that would be consistent with our, R1A zoning in the city, and that would be the recommendation and what is in the plan of services, the proposal to rezon the property to R1A low-density single-family. And that R1A zone, that R1 zoning in the county encompasses the subdivision that sits behind that property and around that property, surrounding that property. As Mr. Sora mentioned, what you will see first is a resolution at your council meeting to move forward with the appropriate signage and things that need to occur regarding the annexation, and that will be followed by a resolution to, in a public hearing, and then a resolution on the plan of services, and then a public hearing and a resolution on the annexation itself. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Tim, here and then, I guess we move on to item number 10.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. The, as we move forward with, with our version of tourism marketing, I think it's important for, to deliver a, a solid message to our hospitality community that we are as committed as ever to tourism and, and marketing that aspect of our, of our economic development puzzle. The, to that end, staff has had conversations with the High Road Agency to provide a scope of work to, for the remainder of the fiscal year. And, and again, this is, this request is simply to ensure that our hospitality industry understands that we are there to support them moving forward. John Luthrow will, will provide an overview of the scope that's, that to be, that is to be provided by High Roads. John?
Thank you, Mr. Sora, for that, for that introduction. Yes, as he said, we, we were tasked with engaging with the High Road Agency, who, as you are aware, we are currently collaborating with on the Bristol Is Ready marketing campaign, the, that sort of community livability and attraction campaign that we're working on, and expanding those efforts to, to include and support our tourism community through marketing efforts. Can everyone see the slide okay on the screen? Great. So the objective really here, there's a couple components. Of course, continuing support for Bristol's tourism and hospitality partners through the remainder of the current fiscal year, as they continue particularly to recover from the COVID-19 downturn in travel. This would involve deploying a marketing campaign to further promote and drive traffic, and I say traffic both literally and figuratively in terms of, you know, people and cars, as well as, you know, digital traffic, to Bristol's tourism assets. This would involve collaborating and expanding upon existing campaigns that may already be in action with some of those tourism partners and other entities, and certainly leveraging the, the capacity and existing tourism relationships held by the High Road Agency. Of course, one of our, our principal contacts there being, being Matt Bolus, who was the, the former director of Discover Bristol at our, at our chamber. In terms of the content of this marketing plan, the, the mix is something that, that we probably, you know, pretty familiar with at this point. Certainly, there's a heavy emphasis on social media marketing. That's one of the easiest ways to reach people directly. We, we all spend plenty of time on social media, and that's where we consume a lot of, a lot of our information. So any opportunities we have to put Bristol's tourism assets in front of people through that channel is certainly appropriate. Also, looking at a print placement, this is a single placement through the Blue Ridge Outdoors magazine. They do a, a go outside and play guide that is released in the spring. This would be what you would think of as like an advertorial placement, so it's not just images and some, some text. There actually is some, some editorial content embedded within that full-page ad. That really describes the opportunities for people to come to Bristol and safely enjoy specifically our outdoor recreation opportunities. Some programmatic audio, this is not something we, we explored previously with the Bristol Is Ready campaign, but this would be through streaming audio services like Spotify. The benefit to, to programmatic audio advertisements like this is you can carefully target those to people. Let's say if someone's listening to a, a country music or bluegrass station, what better audience to tell them about the, the assets at the birthplace of country music, like the museum and that sort of thing? It, it's just a natural fit. Certainly, if there's other, other opportunities to convey information about our motorsports offerings here in Bristol, and again, the outdoor, outdoor recreation opportunities, certainly great avenues for that. Another unique platform that was, that was suggested to us by, by the High Road Agency was advertisements through the Waze GPS app that a lot of folks use to get from point A to point B. This provides driving directions, but also as they come up and down the I-81 corridor and they near the Bristol exits, the Waze app can serve ads to them, letting them know about things that they could pop off of one of those exits and do here in our community. It actually, the app senses the speed that you're traveling at, so if you happen to pull over at a gas station or a rest area, those zero-speed ads can be expanded to full screen where you can really read in more detail about the tourism offerings that we have here, and app users have the opportunity to save those ad experiences to review later or read once they get off the road to a safe place. So certainly, it's a way to, to capture those people who are actively moving through our community and, and encourage them to stop and spend some time with us. Another component, and I'll, I'll discuss this a little bit more when we discuss the budget, but YouTube was carved out as a, a separate option for this. Again, we, we've not really explored a lot of video opportunities with this campaign, but YouTube, again, gives us that, that chance to really target and hone in on an audience. If they're already viewing content on YouTube related to, to outdoor recreation, to motorsports, to country music, to any of those types of things, it only makes sense that they would, they would see an ad experience that, that highlights our assets there as well. I will point out that in this, in this proposal, there was not any traditional TV advertising included, nor was there any interstate billboard advertising included. Largely, that's a function of, of cost, as we've seen with the Bristol Is Ready campaign. TV advertising can be quite costly, and to sustain it for any measure of time that, that would really help us from a tourism perspective, I think would have probably been cost prohibitive. In terms of interstate billboard advertising, you're looking at some pretty long contract commitments there, so those really extend, extend beyond the conclusion of this, this fiscal year and the scope of work for this project. So that's why some of the interstate billboard placements were not included in this particular proposal. When we're looking at the messaging, certainly the ad creative is designed to drive traffic back to our partners, and when I refer to the partners, I'm talking about those entities like the Birthplace of Country Music, Bristol Motor Speedway, The Pinnacle, Believe in Bristol in our downtown area, even some outdoors, specific outdoor attractions like Bristol Caverns, and why not our very own Steel Creek Park as a tourist destination as well. When we're looking at the target markets for some of these ads, when we're doing some of the geo-targeting with the, with the social media ads, for example, let's say we want to capture people that are in the, the Asheville area or the Roanoke area, wanting them to maybe come visit us for a weekend. We, we have a sense of where our, where our tourism dollars and where our tourism travelers come from, but it only makes sense to partner with some of the other folks who are actively engaging in their own campaigns, like the Tri-Cities Airport, for example. I know looking at opportunities coming out of the, the Dallas market from that flight there. Certainly, Neta is, is actively engaged in marketing our region from a tourism perspective, so they have a good sense of where the dollars might be best deployed. And, and the same is, the same is true for Birthplace of Country Music, Bristol Motor And and the same is this same is true for Birthplace of Country Music, Bristol Motor Speedway. All of the partners can provide us information to help make this campaign as effective as possible by reaching the markets that they already know are receptive to those messages. Looking at budget, uh as proposed, this is sort of the breakdown of the marketing mix proposed by High Road. Um about twelve thousand dollars allocated to to social media campaign. Um a roughly equivalent amount um allocated for the Waze app advertisements. The Blue Ridge Outdoors placement, it had a a pretty specific cost associated there at just over seventy-eight hundred dollars. And then the uh the streaming audio, uh programmatic audio placements at about sixty-three hundred dollars. So those four components that that were put together is what I'll call the primary campaign had a total of just over thirty-nine thousand dollars. The YouTube advertising piece was was separate um at about ninety-three hundred dollars. So if you add those together, that gives a total investment for the for the campaign of forty-eight thousand three hundred thirty dollars. Now, while that figure is is significant, as you'll recall, the the cost for the Bristol is Ready campaign, the the city's share of it um before BTS's partnership was about forty-nine thousand dollars. Um that money came from the uncommitted uh city council programs uh funds that had previously been allocated for tourism marketing. Um that project was something that we'd been working with BTS and and the High Road on deploying for for many months. So that forty-nine thousand dollars was essentially money that was not spent out of Community Relations Promotional Services uh budgeted funds. What that means is that now this roughly equivalent amount is still available in the communities uh Community Relations Promotional Services budget, so no new dollars are actually required to commit to to fund this this particular campaign. Um which which is certainly a benefit. We're not having to find money for this. It it's already been allocated um and is fairly easy to deploy. Looking at timelines, the the social media and programmatic audio placements would begin um sooner um really in in March. Um March through June of twenty twenty-one, those are those are a little bit easier to assemble those those ad creative pieces. The outdoor magazine placement is uh is in April of twenty twenty-one. That's when that is published. And then the uh the ways and YouTube ads would begin um also in April and run through June. Uh another note regarding the YouTube advertising, of course, having an an in-house video production department in BTN TV that does represent a cost savings and that we are able to produce our own video content and do not have to rely on any outside agency. So those dollars are actually going to the ad placements themselves and not toward having to get the ads created in in that instance. That's the information that I have and certainly would be happy to to answer any questions.
John, I've got a couple of questions. Um what other offers or that we receive from other entities as far as High Roads of doing the same thing?
So in in this case, we we approached, we approached the High Road directly primarily because we did have that existing relationship with them um under under the professional services agreement that we had pursued with the Bristol is Ready campaign, for example. And that relationship actually goes back a couple of years. Um they've sort of been the our I don't know if you want to call them our our go-to marketing partner for this, but just based on that existing relationship and the 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 capacity and relationships that they have. Um they were the ones that that we approached to to continue this discussion as well.
I'm just curious of the fact that we're, you know, of sound of like if we buy new police cruisers or we buy new any equipment, we still reach out and get other proposals from other entities. We just don't go back just because we bought police cruisers from one entity, go back to them the next time. So I was just curious of what we had done on this.
There there's it's two different types of procurement. Uh this falls under what would be considered professional services. Um like the police cruisers, for example, and that's a good example. That's equipment and that and that's required by TCA to be competitively bid. When you deal with professional services, be it something like like what is being provided here or engineering services, um accounting services, those those types of things, uh we we don't have to go through that kind of a process. Now, typically, if we were doing a a a major road improvement uh like like East Cedar Street, for example, uh CDM was was procured not as a competitive service based on pricing, but uh uh essentially a a request for qualifications or request for proposals where we look at their credential backgrounds and the the staff that they're going to assign to it. What's their academic pedigree? What's their experience with cellular projects and things of this nature? But but uh we're not required to do that when we do when we're dealing with professional services. Reason we went with High Roads on this particular project and especially dealing with tourism is the the individual that will be most closely associated with the deliverable here was a tourism director um here here for both cities for an extended period of time, may uh uh maybe as long as twenty years, but I know it had been in that role for this community for quite some time and was familiar with the product, familiar with our community and how to best market uh our community from a tourism perspective.
No, I don't have, I mean, I I don't know, I don't really know that or uh the group. I was just curious of what, you know, when we're doing this and making sure that we are, you know, we're getting the best person to or group to do this. And um so that was and I guess the other question I've got on, I'm just curious on this, on like the Waze app of that monies. I mean, I use ways and I I believe, I mean, I've got the ads turned off of turn them on and turn them off of what what's the percentage? Do they know the fact that I guess I would think they would know what percentage people have their ads turned on or turned off of using the Waze app?
I don't I don't have that that figure in front of me. That's certainly something that we could look at. Um obviously, one of the benefits of of some of the digital ad placements, and this is also true for for YouTube advertising as well. If if the ad is not served, we don't pay for it. So that's the benefit. So with YouTube, for example, if someone skips the ad, we don't pay for it. So the only cost we have is for people who actually do 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 see the ad in in earnest and have the opportunity to engage with it, but but I can I can do some research and get that.
I was just curious with uh about how that works.
Sure.
Will we be um getting reports that will give us indications of impressions, uh website hits, reports that give us an indication that we're getting what kind of return on this fifty thousand dollar investment? By the way, I'll ask that for our prior campaign that I think we're still in right now. Um, you know, are we going to be getting some reports along those lines?
Absolutely, yeah, that and that's one of the things that we're working with and and will continue to work through. You know, as I mentioned, the goal for the campaign is to really drive drive traffic to those partner entities, so there will be some level of collaboration um working with them to help us measure the con- the the traffic that does go go to their sites. Um we'll absolutely be monitoring the the traffic on the ads and, you know, the the clicks through the number of impressions and report out on that. Uh regarding the ongoing Bristol is uh Bristol is Ready campaign, uh we're still within the first uh roughly the first thirty days of those ads starting in market in in Nashville and Atlanta. So we look forward in the next uh really the next week or two, having our our first round of reports coming out of those on on how those have performed in those markets.
I guess that was one. Uh that was the other thing I was gonna ask of doing this of us without, I know we we do have a history, but with looking and making sure that we are getting the best that is available out there of before we sign up to do more, should we maybe not, I mean, maybe wait and see what type of results we're getting from the current ad with this group before, I guess, put more money back in? Just a thought.
Well, to expand upon that also too is is, you know, we've got we got July first, we're moving into a new fiscal year, and if you're talking about reaching out, really now's the time to be reaching out for that kind of thing as well.
I think I think if I if I'm hearing what uh what what's being said is that um I think it's good to always have uh multiple pitches. And is that i- am I hitting on what you might be thinking based on data points that we have from our current campaigns? You know, do would we want to put uh an RFP out to for for different pitches to see um what other agencies might could deliver for us?
Well, I in in the case we in the situation we're in right now, there's no time to to do that for this particular campaign. I think most of us recognize that the High Road agency is a very reputable agency. I think they'll do a good job with it. But but by the same token, it should give a, they should be giving us some good reports as to the reason or I should say the 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 um, you know, return on investment that we're putting into this. So all of those things are usually quantitatively turned into dollars, but if we get X number of impressions out of the outdoors magazine, for instance, we need to know all of that. What's happening? You mentioned ways. You know, what is happening with ways? How did that how how effective was that? Um so I I think we can gauge a lot probably in the next thirty to sixty days um as we move forward into both these campaigns.
Well, and I know Chad, you and I both served uh about tourism on the tourism marketing board at about the same time. And you had brought up the point about the data points and and I know that I feel confident and John, tell me, please correct me if I'm wrong, that that uh y'all's intent is to provide us with uh quite a review of the data points as to how our our dollars have returned.
Absolutely, and it I prior to this meeting, um in anticipation that there may be some discussion regarding the the performance of the current campaign, um I had asked if there were some reports that were available. Um I was provided with some some preliminary data from the the Nashville and Atlanta markets. Um at this point, what's available is really just reporting on what types of programming our our ads appeared in. Um uh wi- within the next couple of weeks, as I mentioned, they they should be able to provide a little bit more robust first, if you want to call it first round reporting um after that initial thirty day um placement of the of the ads.
It usually takes a couple of months to get the quantitative data related to a campaign.
I think as far as the as far as the selection of High Road, uh you know, it's, you know, I would say that uh the uniqueness of Matt Bolus's experience with marketing tourism in our area, and then then if if we want to do something quickly, then 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 we need to engage a a party. Uh and and when you go through an R and P process, then you're you're probably delaying that process four to six weeks uh to do that. So um I think as we, i- i- you know, there there are a number of decision gates that council uh will need to move forward with in this whole process. One is the short term, and this is a very short term. Uh then the next decision gate is what does this look like July the first? Uh and and I I've been in conversation with uh uh with with an individual that that will that will come and help con- and helps city council with that conversation. What does that look like moving forward? But um so I think this is just the first of several decision points that council will need to consider uh going afro- going forward with tourism market.
I think it looks great. Thank you, John. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, the question or comments?
So will we be voting on this?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. For that dollar amount, that does require city council uh consideration, so that will be formally placed on your on your agenda for the March second meeting.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to item number eleven. Goals and objectives discussion.
Yeah, Mayor, this is largely, this is largely for you guys now uh to to engage and have that conversation. And then we had um we had had this item on our January twenty-sixth agenda and and it became a a pretty long day and and the decision to move that to today uh was made. So I think there are things, and we've already touched on several of these, uh shuttle service, for example, uh conversations on trails and greenways and how do we roll that out? Um the uh as and the 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 concept of having a senior center aquatic facility, those type things. We can look at, we can incl- include those as study items uh moving forward in in fiscal twenty twenty-two. Uh but are there other items that council would like to see? And then I think lastly, uh as we as we had at our January twenty-sixth meeting uh when uh when property assessor uh Donna Whitaker was there and and talked about the um the upcoming reappraisal process and the certified rate and the whole conversation regarding TIPS. Uh while I would not encourage council to make a decision today on 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 TIPS and the certified rate and and so forth and how that's calculated, I think it would be good for council to have a healthy conversation today moving forward toward a decision uh or a recommendation probably during your March work session or at least certainly shortly after that. To give our property assessor direction as to how to treat tests and the calculation of of the certified rate uh going forward for the next four years.
Yeah, one thing I'd like to add, Bill, or go in there, not not pertaining to the tests or anything, is the the Viking Hall project, does anyone remember the approximate cost of it? And the reason I'm asking that is that, you know, I think over the years, you know, there's been a uh potential huge source of revenue that we've not been able to tap on to. Um, you know, if there was something similar to a Viking Hall that, you know, we could look at um uh for the city, but being that, nothing that would be in direct competition with what the school system does over there. I think there's there's some potential for um some potential self-funding of a of a facility like that. You know, via the concerts and and other events that we're we're not able to take advantage of anymore.
Um to answer your first question, I um I I don't recall. Uh matter of fact, I I was working for a sister city at the time. Viking Hall was constructed, which would have been the early eighties, yeah, probably the early eighties. Uh but one thing that that might be more relative to our discussion is um our IDB in partnership with Bristol Motor Speedway, I guess five years or so, four or five years ago now, uh did did retain a consultant to look at the the feasibility of 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 a venue that would provide uh some of the amenities that you just discussed, and we can certainly uh provide that to council and and if we need to even bring the consultant back in uh for further discussion, we can do that. But there there has been a conversation and and that was that was more in a along the lines of of when Bristol Motor Speedway was looking at potential future uses of their campus and 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 what made sense there. Uh that and that was the basis for their partnership with the IDB in exploring uh this study.
Okay.
And I I can certainly get an electronic copy of that and distribute it to council.
One of the things that did come out of that study, I think we were look, uh it did come out that we that we could really um feasibly look at an enter- a a a a an entertainment facility that would house not only concerts, but, you know, particular potentially hockey matches, you know, special type hockey matches, basketball games, uh a multitude of things, uh you know, going forward. We were thinking about along the lines of a convention center type setup. And that's how the study originated. Um but it really turned pretty quickly that we had those facilities in neighboring areas, John C. and Kingsport in particular, and that a an event center is really what would be the the perfect thing for us uh in Bristol. And it also, it also kind of went along the lines of, you know, could we have an outdoor center as well, you know, that might support baseball, those the future of baseball, I guess, is still a little bit up in the air. I'm glad to see things moving forward, but you know, that would, you could be looking at a possible amphitheater, baseball But, you know, that would, you could be looking at a possible amphitheater, baseball type stadium type, type area. But the indoor facility part of that, it was felt that that could be really, that could really be a good catalyst for us, especially with our country music characters and, and all of the NASCAR things that are happening as well.
I think we could create several different revenue streams to support a facility of this nature. That was why I asked about like the farmer's market, you know, is that, is that that type of building? Is it, you know, we, you know, when you think about like the Duke Center, which I know is above and beyond where we would want necessarily go. But, you know, the IBMA is there, and IBMA looked at coming here for an event, and we just didn't have that type of a facility. But as we continue to grow, I think we've really got to be forward looking, forward thinking as to what we can, can do that would generate the revenue streams that would be very multipurpose. And so, Mr. Sora, I think it'd be great should we circulate that study? We, we've had a change in council that probably hasn't gotten to see that just yet. I think that would be really important. I think when we talk to Chad's point, just to be brief, the aquatic senior center, you know, we could even house our part of the library, the Tennessee Library that's at Avoca right now, and to have, you could incorporate a workspace. And so to your point, Chad, you know, it depends on what you would want to incorporate into such a facility as to what grants, there could be multiple grants going web together for, for something of that nature. I, I really would like to hear how we could incrementally visit the wastewater treatment. I mean, not the wastewater treatment, but the, the city garage situation. It, it's been there since when, Mr. Sora, nineteen seventy?
Early seventies.
Early seventies. And, and if you haven't had a chance to go and tour, I would encourage you to. We're running off a lot of equipment in and out of that facility. I look forward to having that conversation about TIFs being included or not included. Our time is coming upon us to have that discussion. I'm still open-minded to a great degree. I see an advantage of not including the TIFs to get the certified state tax rate. Because at that point, we will see exactly what true dollars we had that are not to be returned to developers. And then we can make the adjustment down if we want to, realizing what it's going to take to have, what our true dollars are going to be. So we, we need to have that discussion because, Mr. Sora, when do we have to let them know whether we're going to include or not include?
Well, I think, I think you probably late March, early April, you begin to get into that, into that timeline. In turn, I know I typically will receive the certified rate the first ten days in July. So they certainly have to have ample time to, to go through their processes. That process also has to be, be reviewed at the state level and returned back for, for, with, with that approval. So I think you're, I think you're probably hitting some decision gates in early April at the latest.
Well, and my point, let me say again, I'm open-minded. I just think that before we can prioritize some of these projects, we kind of need to know what we're going, going, what we could potentially be looking at as far as our generated tax revenues. And, and keeping in mind that we've got some things lemming out there that we don't know exactly how it's going to fall as far as tax collections being reduced. So that's about all I've got.
Bill, are you saying that we should have our tax rate by, in May, in March or April?
No, 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 that, that's not usually what we would find. I've been through a couple of the reappraisals, and each time I've received it after the Fourth of July, after, actually after you all would have your July meeting, but I've always had it by around, by no later than the fifteenth of July. So early July, in the last two reappraisal periods, I have received something from the property assessor's office indicating our certified rate. Now, you know, so that means they've got to do their work obviously in advance of that. You know, indicated early April, and, and I think that's probably the time that that office will need to, will need to have some input from you because they've got to run those numbers. I'm not sure if it's Department of Revenue or the comptroller's office that reviews the work with the property assessors, but it does have a, a state level review for the accuracy of the, of the certified rate. And then that comes back to us. So there has to be ample time for that to occur. But it's usually been between maybe the fifth or sixth of July and the fifteenth of July that I receive, receive that information from the.
I guess I, I don't understand what you need from us. I mean, you're saying you need something from us in March or April?
Well, if you're going to do something with, you recall when we, when we had the conversation in twenty seventeen, legislation was proposed really at the request of this council, and Danielle drafted it, and it was subsequently approved by the General Assembly that allowed properties that were under a TIF-type financing arrangement to be pulled out of the calculation of the certified rate. You may, you may recall like when, when, when we provide pilots for certain properties, these properties are transferred in title to the IDB, and, and you're familiar with that from your relationship with the IDB. So they come, that goes to this nonprofit entity, so they come off the tax levels. But TIFs, on the other hand, remain on the tax levels. So the value of that property or the appraised value of that property stays in the calculation of the certified rate. So, and, and what we found was about eight percent of the property tax revenue that was generated in twenty seventeen, and, and even today, is paid back out to TIF payments to developers as incentive to move forward with the project. So, so we, so when that, when that then is, is used to calculate in our, our certified rate, we've got, we have a disproportionate incentive that's out there.
Understood, but I guess what I'm asking, I mean, we're going to be getting information in July that says, here's our, here's our certified tax rate. If you take the TIFs out, you have this rate. If you have the TIFs in, you have this particular rate.
No, no, no. What we'll get is one rate based on what we have instructed them to do. You, you, it won't be an either or kind of thing.
We'll have one rate, but we'll know that a certain part of either rate is with or without the TIFs.
Yeah, you'll, you'll get one rate based on, if you, if, if you don't instruct the property assessor to do anything with the TIFs. In other words, they're in there, they'll be calculated as they were in twenty seventeen, and that will be the rate that you get. If you decide to do something different, and that's, that's the, that's the, the conversation that not only today, but really I think it's a conversation that, that is, that is fully fleshed out in March. But it's important to be thinking about that over the coming months. And that's the reason I had the property assessor there in January to begin this conversation. But it's important that the property assessor be provided some guidance from the city council. Again, as the legislation was written, the local governing body can do nothing, and, and, and the TIFs are in, are in the calculated rate because the, 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 that property is listed as taxable property on the rolls of Sullivan County. So, so all, so you have an all-in number. But as we know, that, that if, if that certified rate is calculated with the TIFs being in that rate, then it's really a, a false positive for us, and eight percent of what, of what we receive is paid back out. So, so you, 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 in, in one sense, you provided the incentive to the developer, but, but you, you, you end up, you end up with a property tax rate that is not giving you the, the true value of, of, of the, of the taxable property in terms of what generates a usable property tax. Does that make sense?
So can we do, I like having a whole session for this. Either, either put that first on a work session with other items, or even have a session that's really focused. And I know Tara does a really good job of modeling, so seeing those modeled numbers, if this, then that, et cetera. I think, and reiterating even again what you're saying right now, Bill, but really giving us time to focus in on it. Because it is a, it's hard to wrap your head around it, and it's a decision that has big implications. So I would appreciate some scheduled time.
It might be appropriate to have a special session for this. This is a complicated issue. If you remember in twenty seventeen, we've probably spent ten or twelve hours in work sessions talking about this issue. I think it's also a conversation that is best had with the, with the property assessor in the room to provide you with as much guidance as, as she and her staff can possibly do. You know, if, if you'll recall, and I, and I sent a copy of this to you all back in, in January in preparation for your January twenty-sixth meeting, that, that there, there was a, an assessment or, or, or I guess a calculation performed by Russell Baker, who was the interim property assessor at that time, that, that gave us a, a different calculation if the TIFs were in or if the TIFs were out. That, you know, if you just do the simple math, and it can't be that simple, but if you look at, we, we generally pay out about one point three five round numbers, million, and, and TIF payments back to the developers. So, you know, on a, on a seventy-two thousand per penny of the tax rate, then that's roughly eighteen, nineteen cents on, on the property tax rate that goes back out that we're not realizing in terms of, in terms of property tax revenue to operate the government. But I think, you know, again, I, I, that's, that's just the simple math, and I'm sure the calculation of that at the property assessor level is far more complex than that.
So you're saying we just need to pick one or the other, what rate we want to use with, with this, without?
It's really not an either, either or. You can actually pick something in between.
Well, what I'm saying is, do we want to, we want to use one rate or the other? We have a current tax rate.
For the category.
And what, what's being suggested is, is move that tax rate up. Sir, you mentioned nineteen cents closer to what the certified rate is.
If you, on the simple math, that would, if you, if you tried to account for the one point three million payout to the developers, that's going to be about, about between eighteen and nineteen cents on the property tax rate.
And also keep in mind, out of our information that we got from the tax reassessor's office, they're expecting somewhere around a twelve percent increase in property values. Which if you use that, that's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of, give me, give me a number, somebody, six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars in additional revenues that the city bring, you bring it. What's that number then?
Yeah, it, it, it doesn't really work that way. Let's say there's a twelve percent increase across the board. And again, we, you know, I'm, I'm looking at it very simplistically in terms of the math. Then, then the, the appraised value, our whole base goes up twelve percent, but then the certified rate is adjusted downward so that there's not new revenue generated from the property tax rate. So, you know, if you, if you were pulling, let's say, let's say the, the property tax rate of two sixteen right now, if across the board, everything went up twelve percent, take eighty-eight percent of two sixteen, so your new certified rate, again, because it would be, what's that, a buck ninety-one, something like that, to do that. So again, you're, you don't, the certified rate, and it's different in Virginia, and, and that may be part of the confusion here. The, in Tennessee, if there's new revenue to be gained from the reappraisal process, the local governing body has to make that political statement by voting to keep it at, at the old rate if the rate is, is pulled down. Just like the discussion last, in twenty seventeen, we had a, we started the, we had a two dollar and twenty-five, two dollar and twenty-five cent property tax rate that was adjusted downward to two sixteen because of growth of property values within a community during that four-year period. Again, the straight math, if it's, if it goes up twelve percent, we don't gain that. That means the property tax rate is adjusted downward to take into consideration that growth of property tax, that of property values within that four-year period. So, so.
If we keep the rate, if we keep the rate at two sixteen, no matter where it reflects, if we keep the rate at two sixteen, that, that will grow about, she said about twelve percent. It's what she's estimating.
Keep it at two sixteen. If you keep it at two sixteen and the certified rate comes back at a buck ninety-one, then you would capture that, absolutely. That, that contrasts with what we did in twenty seventeen when we were at twenty, at two twenty-five, and we went down to two sixteen. Does that make sense?
I, I, I knew that, yes. I, I, I know all of that. I'm just saying, if we keep the tax rate the same as what it is, revenues will grow about twelve percent if, if it holds true to that point.
Yeah, if you do that, yes.
But I think the question that we, to be contemplated in March is, do we notify the county tax assessor that we want to include the TIFs in the calculation, or do we want to pull the TIFs out of the calculation? Realizing that the TIFs themselves are in the calculation at its current appraised value, which is not exactly what is being returned to the city because that, that value is then returned to the developer. So if I have a property that originally was worth four thousand dollars, and I got a TIF, and I made the improvements, and now the, now my property is valued at ten thousand dollars, that means that if you, if we as a city include that TIF in the development of our certified tax rate, the city, the, the state will more or less say, okay, we're going to credit your tax reimbursement by six thousand dollars because that's what the city is obligated to return to the developer because I, as the property owner, can only have my property taxed at four thousand dollars until the life of my TIF has expired. So when we, if we include the, it's just something to think about. If we include the TIFs, then the state is saying you're getting back the full value of that currently appraised property. When actuality, the actuality is that we are getting back the original property value before any improvements were made. And so because of the Transparency and Taxation Act, we need to fully disclose to our community, regardless of how we do this, that based on the certified tax rate, we may or may not be getting back the true dollars that it represents. That if we include the TIFs, it's going to say that we're getting back more money to spend for city purposes than we actually get because that eight percent of TIFs that we currently hold will be delivered back to the developer. That's, that's, that's my only point, is that in our conversations, we've got to determine whether we want to leave the TIFs in or take the TIFs out. Now, if we take the TIFs out and the certified tax rate increases, we then still have the full capability to reduce that tax rate. I think that sometimes there's, we don't understand, or that our general population may not understand that that certified tax rate is only a basis from us to work from. We can either reduce it, and God forbid we can increase it. But it gives us a true basis. If the TIFs are not included, we have true numbers and we don't have to do the calculations of the eight percent return to the developer. It's just something we need to think about. It's something that we could probably use a session on, Mr. Sora, and the state comptroller's office the last time. I know Chad, you made the arrangements for them to be involved in our discussion as well. So I think information at this point will help us make a better decision.
I, I think everybody's pretty clear on that. You know, I, I, but our decision, again, coming up, it's the end of March, or first part of April, or wherever the date is, is whether we include in the certified rate TIFs or not to include the TIFs. That's our, that's the essence of what, we declare that, and whatever we declare, that goes from here on out forward.
Absolutely. Yeah, for the next four years, yes. Yeah.
Oh, but in four years, council is not, is going to keep that. I would think that would. I would think that would continue on after that four years, would it not? Or you're saying that could be taken either way?
You could provide any time that you're, that the the property assessor's going through the reappraisal process, that would be the time to provide guidance as to, as to how you wanted to proceed with the TIPS and the certified rate.
Danielle, that's how the legislation was written, correct?
The legislation doesn't really detail that process. You know, I think if I were writing it now, after having these discussions, I probably would have put more detail in there like that. But it does talk about the governing body being able to exclude those properties from the certified tax rate calculation. And I think certainly, if I were the property tax assessor, I would want to have that decision made every time there's a reappraisal year so that you've, you have this discussion because it is a big decision, so.
Yeah, I believe I agree that we probably need to have a separate work session for this. And if all possible, the tax assessor be a part of it.
Okay. If if council could give me some dates that 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 you would like to have this, then I'll certainly pose those dates to Ms. Whitaker and engage her her availability.
We're going to have an extensive work session coming up in March?
We will, yeah. And that's, there's some other items there that I wanted to talk with you all, you know, in that are potential dates, I mean, excuse me, potential agenda items. One of those would be, I would like to have a conversation with a tourism consultant to talk with you all about what July 1st looked, and going and going beyond that looks like, and help you all as you as you contemplate that picture. The, also, I have had a request from United Way. I suspect I would also, that that I would also hear from BCM, Theater Bristol, BIB, and the other nonprofits that we support regarding a conversation with council. They, there's usually, we usually have an opportunity for that at some point during the spring. We can do that as a separate discussion or we can or we can piggyback that in into a work session. I think the 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 discussion about the certified rate is significant enough that that we should, we should contemplate a perhaps a noon discussion. I would suggest that we have that in the Slater Gymnasium so you can all gather together and have that discussion with Ms. Whitaker and her staff.
So the, in March, we have five Tuesdays, if that's helpful, for whether that, if our work session's on the 23rd, the 4th, or Tuesday, so whether that fifth Tuesday is.
We could look at the 30th. That would be, that would be a good opportunity on the 30th. And and depending on what the agenda looks like on the 23rd, we could pick up some of those nonprofits, if it's the desire of council to hear from nonprofits this year. Again, those are, those decisions are up to you.
I'll be gone. I would not, I would not be able to do it in person then, but possibly Zoom on the 30th.
Okay.
I think on the 30th, if the governor's order comes out, we'd have the potential to do a hybrid meeting.
Yeah, it says, from what I'm seeing from TML released, it would be the provision for at least another 30-day period.
Which is possible, yeah.
Yeah, it's possible.
Right. Tentative.
If that doesn't work for the 30th to do the hybrid, I was going to suggest either the day before or the day after of our work session the prior week. Because I may have, I think.
You muted.
So Chad, is what you're saying maybe to the 22nd or the 24th?
Well, I was going to say, if we can't, if we do it on the 30th, that's fine. If we can do something in a hybrid form, I think Vince mentioned, that's probably what I would do on the 30th as well. But I was going to suggest either the day before or day after our.
If if those dates are open with all members of council, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, then I'll post those dates to Ms. Whitaker and see when she might be available along with her staff to come and have those conversations. And then we confirm that up. I can hopefully notify council next Tuesday night at our regular meeting as to as to which date is acceptable for Ms. Whitaker.
Yeah, okay. I would make arrangements. I do have a 20, something on the 22nd. But the 30th in a hybrid form, I'm willing to work with that as well, so it's fine.
Yeah, I think it depends on how the governor's order is is written as far as the dates. I'm very confident that that the 30-day window that they're referencing there would would certainly cover 22nd, 23rd, or 24th.
22nd, I've got a noon. So if it could be either before, before noon or after, after 1:00 would be helpful.
Okay. Okay.
I'm good either way.
I'm good throughout March. A question, you know, when we're talking about some of these other things that we're interested in, should we, when is it that y'all believe, or Mr. Sora, that we would really do a dive on that? Or is that something that we really need to see where we are financially once we have our certified tax rate back in and have a greater understanding of what our tax revenues are for the next four years?
Well, as we, as we've done the the last couple of times we've gone through the reappraisal process, we build our budget based upon the revenue that would be derived from the, from the existing rate. In other words, the 21612. We build our budget around that. We've, again, the the two years that I've been involved in this, we've always had the certified rate in July, which is after our timeframe for completion and submission of a budget. So we would have our our regular April meeting, which I think is April the 27th. And that's our day-long discussion. And we'll, we'll have our multi-year financial models then. And and we can, we can forecast where we'll be, not only for fiscal '22, but then then subsequent years following that. And then then what we have historically done is, once we have received the certified rate, we've had those discussions that does require two readings and a public hearing. And that's always been conducted during a reappraisal year in August and September with with the public hearing and and second reading in September after we have approved our budget. We will approve our budget without establishing a tax rate this year, but we will base our property tax revenue on the rate that exists.
So in this particular budget, based on that, then these other projects that we've talked about could only be funded if they came out of the general fund or not at all?
That's correct. That's correct.
I just want to clear for everybody that's watching.
I will say, and I sent you all shortly before we started our meeting today, so you probably haven't had a chance to check it, the local option sales tax. And we've said we've been growing, our growth has been local option sales tax. This year so far is no exception. And and I'm excited, local option sales tax is hitting it out of the park right now. It's substantially above the COVID-sensitive budget that we prepared for this year. But what is, what is even more impressive and more exciting is that it's $160,000 above the same period last year. So our December sales tax collections are in. And they're 160, and in the aggregate, we're 160,000 ahead of the same period last year. And last year was tracking toward a record year had we not hit the COVID, COVID downturn for about a six, seven-week period. So that that's exciting.
I was just, I'm assuming we're in the middle of our goals and objectives right now, right?
Somewhere there.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to kind of say that I totally agree with one of the priorities that I think we've had, which kind of falls under safety, protect health and safety of our citizens is the, you know, as we've moved forward with the fire station in East District. I think that is important. And and so I totally agree with that. More also, you know, one of the areas also is our economic climate enhance and sustain our economic climate. You know, one of the things that that I think we need to look at pretty hard, I sent information to everybody, and I hope you guys had a chance to look at it or will sometime in the future look at that. But we've got some really good initiatives happening within our school system and within the Industrial Development Board that pertain to education and workforce development. One of the things on their area, and I think it's something we need to consider, is they need a new, they need a new CTE facility. Or let me say this, they may be able to build on or something like that. But it is going to take some construction. And just in a few of the conversations that I've had with customers pertaining to, you know, the workforce, we have companies, we have companies right now in the nation, like Google and Microsoft were two great examples that were given to me, that are hiring people straight out of high school. And they usually have certifications in certain areas. And if you look through the information I sent you, really, Tennessee High School is really starting to click on all four cylinders, all eight cylinders. Let's make it 12 cylinders, why don't we say that, K through 12, right? All 12 cylinders on really meeting the needs of the future workforce. And and some of the areas that they're going into, you know, that, well, let me say this, not only just in technology, but they're going into areas like welding is something they're doing, hospitality and tourism, cybersecurity, teaching as a profession, sport and human service performance. I mean, I think it's really huge what they're doing. And I think we need to really consider how we can help, especially in the facilities part of their request. Or let me say their, as they're rolling this out, how we can help in those particular areas. It also coincides with our facility, our school facility study that we had a couple, three years ago that showed we need somewhere in the neighborhood of $60 to $80 million for our school facilities. $35 million of that is being spent now for the, for the middle school. We knew that was a priority. But there was an additional $20 million for Tennessee High School and another $20 million that went into our elementary schools. So I really think we need to be having a really close conversation with our school system and really support our IDB as they help with these initiatives going into workforce development. And then the third thing I was just going to mention as far as goals, so that's a huge part of it. But I really think that we need to be continuously pushing for our housing sector. We, and it does fall within our improving existing housing, that's number three. You know, I really think we have good programs. I think we've got great property here. I think we have multiple things that are hugely positive. And I do think that we market pretty good. The only thing that concerns me is we are not going out and selling it. And sometimes it takes a fight to go out and reach a developer and do a face-to-face is is one of the things that I think would help us along these lines. And in the housing sector, tough for us to do that. You know, we've got, we go into the sales end of things, really, when we talk about our industrial sector of business. You know, we've, we've got our economic development team that work diligently with that along with Bristol, Tennessee, Estancia Services and Networks. But when we talk about housing, you know, we, it's one of those things that I kind of feel like we really are doing a good job marketing, you know, marketing it, but it's selling it and making sure that we get that eyeball-to-eyeball, face-to-face, conversation-to-conversation with these developers. And what we've done, and been a huge success, in my opinion, is having the developer meetings that we have. That is a, that's a great thing. It's a good overall look at what we're trying to push forward and get ideas from them. But I really think that personal thing between a developer and what the city can do and someone within the city, and kind of a constant reminder that we're here because we're finding the same things that are going on in Kingsport, John City, Abingdon, every place else in areas are doing these exact or similar incentives as well. So for me, those things are really key importance, the health and safety. Then our workforce develop, education workforce development and housing, I really think are key things for us moving forward.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
I can build on that for continuing discussion. And I'm hoping to be able to get my vaccination this afternoon. So hoping that we can keep, keep talking here. So the several things that I put line up a little bit, Chad, with what you're talking with workforce development, et cetera. But one thing, and so mine aren't facility things. They are trying to learn and think and maybe making some changes and some staff time. But I thought it'd be good for us to do some study. We like to study other communities that are managing to keep, keep their young people, attract their young people back, attract new, new folks, really dig down and say, what, what are some of those things that we, where are gaps for for being able to do that? So spending some time doing that. The other on, next is workforce development and reading more about that. And I'll also make a plug for some programming. But we're learning, and we had one program, and I think it'd be beneficial to have more. Early brain development sets the stage. It gives the architecture, it starts the platform for those essential skills. I like to call them essential, not soft, because they are absolutely essential. And there's more and more stuff coming out all, every day about how that's affecting our workforce. And that we've got to give those opportunities early on, make sure they happen in homes and families with parenting and with family support, and then with good childcare opportunities. And if we miss that out, and that was the National League of Cities Conference Workshop I went to eight years ago, maybe, before they even used the term adverse childhood experiences, that it was on the future of your workforce. And that's what they taught us was brain development. It's critical. If you want a good workforce, you're paying attention to early childhood development today. So there's more and more stuff. So trying to learn more about that and what is the effect? What can we be doing? And 20 years ago, more than 20 years ago, when I went to workshops on economic development, heard some of the same stories I'm hearing today about people who don't show up for work, passing drug tests, et cetera. If we, and then the need for parenting education, help to support families. If we had addressed it at a greater level 20 years ago, those folks are entering the workforce today. So would really, and First Tennessee Development District has a Department of Labor grant where they're dealing with some of this stuff. Appalachian Sustainable Development is working on a grant, dealing with it. Ballad Accountable Care Community is focusing on it. And Bristol's Promise, and I was going to put, let y'all know, the first Friday, we're going to be tying brain development to workforce development. And then we'll be following up with a couple of workshops, one on training on building strong brains, and then one on childcare. And then the other thing that I have wanted almost from the time that I came on council and whether we could look at it seriously is to how to involve our youth in our government. And we go to National League of Cities, and there are youth who attend that they come from youth councils in towns of all different sizes. And they're usually kids that are either middle school or high school and have opportunities to learn about their city government and then participate in various ways. And usually the council, we used to have Youth in Government Day. We don't have that anymore. And but the youth council is an ongoing opportunity that the kids rotate in and out and have meetings once a week or once a month or whatever you set it up. And it's been set up in different cities under different departments. It's been under planning, it's been under Parks and Rec, it's been under the mayor's office, which we don't, we don't really have. But if council had the will to look at that, to see what the opportunities are, to be able to encourage our kids to participate more. It's also part of careers, helping kids to choose city government and county government. And as. um as careers. Um, and we know we've got some great opportunities in our city as well as others. So that's three things that I would love to do. They're not facilities. They do cost money because it's staff time. Um, but I think that they are critical, critical things to be looking at. So, thank you. I probably have more, but those are the ones I wrote down.
You can send an email.
I'll send an email with with them. I typed them up.
Well, I'll jump in. Uh, as y'all know, a few years ago, we worked very hard to try to land a TCAT CTE facility here and uh that whole situation has not dissolved. I think that the thing I I read through the information from the IDB, I thought that was great. I thought Deidre and Amy Scott did a great job. We are hoping uh they have both been reached out to by both the county and the city representatives of of uh networks to be prepared to present uh two networks. And we believe that our that uh the the best way for us to obtain what we we hope to obtain as far as workforce development is through collaboration. Uh, our school system did receive the three point, I wrote down 3.1 million uh through uh some of the COVID Relief Act. The county has received about 31 million right now. And if you look at Sullivan County, we know that um Kingsport has a great STEM's quasi CTE opportunity. West Ridge will have over 21 different units. Uh, Tennessee High School is working diligently to to really elevate their program and, but East High School as well. And East is due for a renovation and so there may be the opportunity for us to collaborate. Uh, you know, it all comes down to money and funding. And and how do we do that? Right now we have a pre-estateure budget and uh we've got to figure that out. And so I think through collaboration, that might be a great way, great way to do that. I think that the fire station, yes, I think that public, public works and and uh public safety are are critical. I'm really glad that we have the um, the enterprise funds.
The spot.
Well, my, my first is I, as I said just a minute ago, is CTE and is workforce development and uh uh, and I think that the best way for us to achieve that is through collaboration uh with our school system as well as with the county. Um, and with the state, quite honestly, and to to see what that kind of partnership as well as with the private sector. I think that oftentimes we don't, we we try to take things on by ourselves and don't appreciate the private sector to the degree that they can be with partners in something like this. I think that our uh, of course, fire and safety first and foremost, as well as our utilities, because those are the basic first line services that we provide in addition to education. And um I do think at some point we have got to have a serious conversation about these projects that uh take us to the next level. You know, we've talked about them for for years now. And if if we're not going to do anything about them, let's take them off of our scope of work. And and let's focus on on just the day to day nitty gritty of it. I think that you know, there are ways to 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 package some of these things and to generate revenue streams to support them. I think we've just got to be creative and we've got to find those ways and be open to how we generate those uh uh revenue streams. And so um I look forward to continuing the conversation.
Yeah, I don't know that I can add anything to all this conversation. It's all great stuff. And um, you know, obviously it does take funding and I think that's, that's got to be a major objective that we, we have to um truly make a huge effort on trying to get the funding for a lot of these projects. Um, great conversations.
Malin, I just one thing. Pat Scholl brought up a great point in our networks meeting uh this month, and it's that, you know, when we talk about workforce development, uh, you know, we're, we're still talking about the opioid crisis and uh to Margaret's point about uh the early brain development being so essential. And and the point that he made is that as a region, we really don't have the facility nor the the capability to provide what we need to provide. And so I think in the, in the name of regionalism, this is something that we should really take a look at is to how we uh serve our underserved and our uh, our um neighbors and friends that uh are working from a disadvantaged position. And uh he made, he made a really great point that we, we need to, as a region, take a look at the facility uh uh aspect or the lack thereof and and how we can address some of these social issues. You know, uh people want to, people want to say, well, we want folks on economic development, but, but I will agree with Margaret, absolutely. This is economic development because we can't get people into the workplace that can't pass a drug test, that can't show up on time, or they have suffered through such adversity that they're so traumatized that they can't focus on, on uh job performance. So I would like for us to really begin the conversation with our uh county and our sister cities all around us uh as to to what we can do, how we could collaborate to put together some type of facility and programming once and for all to begin trying to address this. And I think our state would be very open to this conversation as well.
People lead to to add to that. That was a conversation a couple of weeks ago when Congresswoman Hashbarger um um called in and and that that conversation there was, was talked about for several minutes. So absolutely, we need to move that forward.
So Phil Rowe talked about the facility in Greenfall being repurposed, so for some mental health stuff. Also, just FYI, the, the, and it's been said before, the uh adverse childhood experiences, trauma, higher levels of those are associated with higher levels of addiction. So um that's also helping with that platform of development helps to reduce the addiction.
Good. Uh, do you want me to ask my questions? Now, Vince, you got anything? I mean, anybody else before I, I just got a couple of I just questions to ask about a couple of items and stuff.
Go ahead. A lot of what's been, was on my list has been covered with the um, with the housing, the CTE. There's um I think it's all been covered of in the conversations, so.
I like, I like, we're all on the same page on all those things.
Yeah.
So I, I was going to ask if we could get or if we could just get a one-page briefing, very simple, about the history. Um, you know, back years ago about sewage problems that were part of Ben Lake. That's one thing. Um, yeah, and evidently there were some resolutions back then, years and years and years ago, way prior to all of our times. It'd be nice to know exactly what that's all about. Um, I wanted to, uh, there was also some correspondence from, may have been one or or several of our citizens about the Beaver Creek South. Um, hold on a second. I made a note of Beaver Creek, South Greenway Trail and the continuation of that. Um, and I was, you know, if we got some information on that, it it could be just a one paragraph explanation on that and where we've been and where we're going. Is there something left to do? What is there left to do and where that fits? Or can you tell us, Bill?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, this, this is the project that we talked about uh earlier during our CIP presentation. This is the trailing Greenway and that first initial stage of it um from, that would go from Roosterfront Park down to Bristol Motor Speedway. Uh, and then the first phase of that project would be from Bristol Motor Speedway along Beaver Creek North up to the Avoca Christian Church or somewhere in that, in that vicinity. And then from there, I think we had it broken up, broken apart uh into three different elements. Um, so, but that's, that's what that conversation is about. And you're right, there was a letter to the editor uh probably a week or so ago now, talking about that. But I, I think from for you all, the next presentation, once our engineering uh staff completes the design of that project exclusive of any pedestrian bridges across Beaver Creek, uh, then, then we would have that presentation to council. Uh, they're in the survey process now of 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 detailing the easements that would need to be acquired. But once, once that's finalized, have the conversation with council and that would be part of a work session presentation. And then shortly after that, we need to have a community conversation about that trail. Uh, and 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 again, I think there'll be proponents. I think there will be individuals in opposition to it, just depending on where you're on where you are in terms of the activity and then the impact on your product. But that's the, that's that South Bristol Greenway that.
Okay, I guess the way that was worded in the paper or whatever the letter we got, I guess was word where I thought it was a different, a different trail system. It might be good for us to know, and and maybe that's in our last presentation, our current trail system, like what we have. You know, the West, uh, West Davis Greenway and those stuff that we had. Was that in our last presentation as to what we have right now?
It, it was. If you recall, we had uh a summary. It was probably last summer because I know we were in a virtual format in which the consultant talked about this first, this first phase and and the concept there, gave us some preliminary budget estimates. Gave us some preliminary routing that had, that certainly needed to be nailed down uh more in terms of a design sense uh by our staff uh in in that, but uh, but that was the, that was the conversation that we had. I think it was probably summer or or early fall uh that that our consultant uh gave that presentation.
The, the last thing I was going to mention was what, I mean, we used to meet our um council members and commission members out of Johnson City, aldermen out of Kingsport, we used to meet and just get together and just talk. And um uh, it was totally unofficial. There was no agenda. It was just one of those things. And actually, it was broadcast to the media so that it was, you know, that everything along the legal lines of sunshine laws and that type of thing were were addressed. But I'm curious to know if we shouldn't be doing something like that in the near future, whenever the things open up. Uh, especially with our Kingsport counterparts. And um you know, we, we, we all in Sullivan County are making, you know, significant progress in our own respects towards CTE and towards um, you know, workplace development and that kind of thing is. And I think if, you know, it could get, it could get way too huge, especially when, if you get involved with our commissioners, our Sullivan County commissioners. But you know, we all really, really need to know what everybody else is doing. And in some cases, we don't know. Um, and I don't know if we could figure out some kind of logistics where all of our um, you know, commissioners and aldermen and council members could uh, and I don't want to do anything in depth. I mean, something that lasts maybe an hour, hour and a half at most, but something that kind of tells us a little bit about what everybody else is doing, especially when it comes to workforce development and also address regionalism.
Right. Um, I mean, I'm making, I'm making a note of that. Uh, probably the last time we really gathered and it wasn't in the context that you described, but um, the uh, the, the uh, the legislative agendas or the legislative policy meetings that we have with our state delegation afforded the opportunity for the city councils of Bristol, Kingsport and Johnson City together informally. Uh, and 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 have a, and have a no agenda type discussion like you described. I think the last time we had anything really similar, that was actually a few years ago. Uh, and we met in Kingsport uh at a restaurant there. It was a very informal uh just discussion with the, with the, the, once again, the local governing bodies of the three cities. I don't recall having a county commission from either Sullivan or Washington County involved unless it was probably three years ago now, we gathered in the uh, in the mezzanine at the airport and 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 had a conversation around aerospace park and uh, and 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 how do we collaboratively uh work on 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 advancing this region? And that, that probably did involve the, the three local governing bodies as well as as the two county commissions. Um, but again, I, I think we've, before we contemplate those, we've got to ob- obviously get further into the, into, into ending this pandemic.
I just think if each of us talk with our counterparts, you know, mayor to mayor and council to alderman and that kind of thing and manager to manager, just something to keep in mind, you know, just to how we may be able to do that. I mean, I, I just think it'd be good, especially within Sullivan County, to know where everybody is and make sure that we're standing together and and collaborating and supporting each other.
And I think to that point, it would be interesting to know because I know that John Luttrell has worked and the Department of Community Relations has worked very hard to get uh our information out into the public domain. And I know oftentimes um I'm, I'm just not seeing it locally in our public domain and that, and I don't think it's because it hasn't been sent. I think it's just because maybe it hasn't been a priority to be uh communicated. Um, I'm finding lots of information um about um, I have found several things about Bristol and Johnson City communication as well as Kingsport communication. So I would really be interested, Mr. Sora, for us to take a look at, at um how we're communicating. Uh, how, how often we have put information out to be communicated and how often that information has actually been, been um, been communicated. Uh, several things, you know, we talk about what's going on in, in all the surrounding cities and communities. And oftentimes we've already done what's been communicated and touted as, you know, very progressive. We did it six months ago. And um, we've even had in the past three or four months, programs that we've put into place being picked up almost word for word by other communities, which is a great compliment. But it's not being put out there that we're doing it. And so I would just, if there's, if there's a breakdown somewhere, if we, if we need to, if we're made aware of it, if we need to, to talk about it a little bit more as to how we get our story out. And like I said, I'm, I'm very well aware that John and the Department of Community Relations has really, they've really made a big effort to get the information about Bristol out. But um, I agree with you, Chad. I think that, that we do need to be in conversation with, with our fellow uh elected legislators. But I, I, I do think that Bristol's doing a lot. I think John is putting the communication out there. I'm just curious as to how often it's actually being picked up.
We, we can certainly provide you with the, with the list of releases and the subjects and even a copy of the release for that matter. And then, and then a summary of which news media picked it up.
But if we, if we need to do some, some relationship building from a council level, you know, then let's do it and and get back online with communication to a greater degree.
Keep in mind also too, you know, we have done a really good job in the past, prior to COVID, I should say, of, you know, connecting with our uh county commissioners. Us, in particular, our Bristol County Commissioners and County Commissioners that are close or border their, their uh areas border city, uh border Bristol City. Uh, but they may, their entire area may be in the county. You know, that may be a way of looking. You know, that may be a way of looking at things too, is, is, as we get towards the summer months and vaccinations and, you know, go further and further and where we can meet face to face. Maybe, maybe we can, maybe we can do as we've done in the past is, is meet with our county, you know, counterparts. And then maybe separately, we meet with our Kingsport counterparts as well. And both would be, you know, I, I think, I think both, all sides of that's going to have information, probably revealing information that we don't know about or that they don't know about.
I think one thing we need to probably try to figure out, I'd heard recently that the same company on all three papers now, need to figure out if that's, that's true or not.
Say, say that again, Malin now.
I heard recently that the same company owns all three of the local papers now, Kingsport, Johnson City and Bristol.
I'm, I'm not sure about that.
I think it'd be interesting if we can find that out, just see if there's any continuity or lack of continuity there. I mean, I can, I can call Jim myself and ask him if that's, that's true.
Boy, silence really kills me.
Are we ready for, are we ready for our round? I have one to announce.
Probably, if, if y'all could, could give me some direction on the electronic meetings going forward in March. The, the, the one that's, obviously we need to make the quick decision on is our March 2nd meeting. Do you want to convene in Slater? Or do you want to continue to convene electronically as we have in the past? And then the next meeting after that will be our work session on the 23rd. And then whatever we work out with the property assistant office on, on either before or after that date. So if you could provide staff with some guidance there so we can properly advertise the meetings.
Good either way we do it, Bill, personally.
I have not been vaccinated and I would prefer to go electronic for our upcoming meeting, for our upcoming March 2nd meeting. I think we play it back, if we, when do we need to let you know on the? Well, I guess we need to know what the governor's doing for sure.
The, the meetings are advertised. We just need to provide something on, on our website if we're, if we're doing something as far as, as where the meeting's being held and that type of thing. That's not, that's not something that we, as long as we've properly advertised the meetings, and we have for those standing meetings. If we're deviating from our, our normal Slater Center location, we just need to make sure that, that that's noted on our website and, and our other social platforms. Is it the consensus then that, that we will, our, our meeting next Tuesday will be conducted electronically?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then if, then I guess the, and we can have more conversation next Tuesday regarding our meeting for our work sessions. And hopefully I'll have an opportunity of had a conversation and pick out a date and time that, that Ms. Whitaker can be with us at that time also.
And Malin, to your question, Kingsport Times News and the Johnson City Press are both owned by Six Rivers Media and the Bristol Herald is owned by Lee Enterprises.
Different.
Yep.
I would remind council of your training requirements for utility finance. And I think both Vince and Malin are current. I think the others, I will, I think you need to get X number of hours over a particular, over the, maybe through the end of maybe next year, I think you, so you're, you've got some time. I'll send you an update that Tara.
Yeah, I did 12 hours.
Okay, have you, have you made Tara aware of that or?
I didn't know how that is followed up.
Okay, if you could just follow up with an email and that, we, we're required by the comptroller's office to keep track of that on your behalf, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I did it months ago.
Mayor, that's all I have. You're, you're, you're on, you're on mute, Mayor. There you go.
Any city council comments we need to continue with, anyone?
I'll just share that part of the Martin Luther King Celebration last year first time was an art show. We did it again this time, but virtually. And those are, so you're going to see those in the next couple of weeks. There'll be a press release going out. It'll be available digitally, so you can look at it online with the winners identified for each Tennessee High and Virginia High. And then they're going to be on display the month of March in the downtown windows of our downtown community. So I've seen just a quick look and some pretty impressive artwork.
Anyone else? Hearing none, declare this meeting is, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Oh, everybody's waving, okay. Declare this meeting adjourned.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Y'all, y'all have a good afternoon.